As a team, so what we plan to do, obviously, we plan to apply each year for the grant and to work on providing a design ahead of the fiscal year budget proposal and present to council for it, say, hey, these, if we completed these particular projects, it would cost as much. And then we would propose those and we would then make the decision at that time. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at now and would definitely like to solicit a conversation and discussion.
All right, thank you. Discussion with city council, planning commission.
No, honestly, I brought this up because I had a conversation with someone. Can you guys hear me? Anyway, the conversation about the number of some of the funds by my colleagues from the neighbors. And when I found out that they had received a fee in lieu for those funds and the fee in lieu had been adjourned to be done to the general fund, that change rate has reached me. It felt like if we take money from somebody for a specific purpose, then they hate to be spent on that specific purpose. And what I really tell me that you increased the number, Jonathan, is this 12% increase, 12% on top of the June?
Will you, I think I just got some of that, Sheri, would you mind repeating that for us? It's a little hard to hear on my end.
Sorry, the 12% that you increased, was that since the June presentation? So these numbers are 12% higher than the June presentation?
It's 12% higher from the August presentation, so that is a most recent update. Does that answer your question?
That perfectly, so there my concern, because we did this money from the developer a long time ago, thinking that it was a cost to do that. It was not calculated correctly or wasn't calculated correctly, whatever situation was. And every year we wait, it's going to cost more and more money. And we're obligated to, we took the money. So I feel strongly that if we take money from this developer, it's something we need to perform on that.
So that, some of the prioritization, I believe, has to be, has to take into consideration.
Yeah, just Sheri, to kind of echo some of your sentiments that you were saying, it's, I'm not going to go back and try and criticize all the decisions or how it didn't happen, but when, when we receive something as a fee in lieu recorded in 2002 and it's still not done, not only are we paying way more than we originally planned in the fee in lieu, so it costs taxpayers way more. But now it's, now it's competing with projects now for the same, for funds that were put in the, the general fund. So we've complicated the issue even more now, right? So it, it, that 12% increase cost, I don't know how, how, what kind of an annual increase we would be seeing in costs, but I'm sure it's going to cost more next year and it's going to cost more the year after. I would like to try and get these done as quickly as possible. The question is, your point Sheri, is priorities. I think we owe it to the residents to do the things that should have been done 18 years ago and probably start there. As we get to the more recent ones, I would suppose there's probably some flexibility in how we might want to adjust those, you know, based on budget constraints and some other things. But I don't see how we can justify not doing the ones from 2002, 2006 nearly immediately or as soon as possible. As far as the other ones go, I would like to get them done as soon as possible too, because costs are going up. Now, we have constraints on how many resources we have, how much money is available, budget, time, seasons, I get it. But I guess my point would be, let's do them sooner than later to save taxpayers' money.
Hey, this is Adam, I don't know if I can speak yet, though I don't want to. But my, my bigger question, and I, when I saw this on the agenda, I get that the council wants to get going on the stuff that we haven't done. But I would like to maybe address, what about the future and the fact that this fee in lieu of doesn't always make sense? So I, I think, you know, we are Harriman, so we haven't slowed down any development whatsoever. And so I think we need to talk about maybe avoiding fees in lieu of in the future or what that, when it really should happen for fee in lieu of. Because I agree with you, you're never going to recoup your costs. You might as well get a crappy product back then and at least have grass for half the time then to move forward. But right now, that fee in lieu of decision is not in our planning commission wheel box because we say, put it in, and this, that, that decision is not done by us and not done by the council. So I think that discussion is more critical to have that than necessary catch, catch ups.
Yeah, Jonathan, do you want to address that? Because I think it's been taken care of, right?
Yeah, you know, I can do my best to, to explain, maybe, maybe speak to that if that's okay, if that's what you're asking, Sheri. I think that, you know, there's, there are some cases where it might appear where a development might be. And I, and I'm obviously speaking to what's been done in the past. I don't know, you know, everything that was at play. But we do see in many cases where you might have a development that's essentially on an island and improving the roadway and the park strip and curb and gutter to some extent may not make sense at that particular time. But we are, I would say that staff has made a concerted effort as of recently to ensure we've, we've listened to council and we've seen that the, the negative effects of accepting a fee in lieu and making that a last resort. And so certainly that's, that's essentially how, how we're planning to proceed forward is, is fee in lieu is seen as not now, not the method that we, we move forward on, right? It's get it done first as priority one. And if it's just for whatever reason it might be that it doesn't make sense, that that's a last resort. Does that answer your question, Sheri?
Yeah, maybe I was just confused because last time we discussed this, like that Blake specifically said that we are, we're not doing that anymore.
She said, she mentioned that we weren't doing it at all. It ended up like, did you hear what she said?
Sheri, Chris, you guys are coming in pretty quietly, pretty difficult to hear, but what I heard, let me just kind of repeat the question. Tell me if I've got it right. The understanding from planning commission and city council, at least at this point, is that that is, that should no longer be provided an option or at least the perception was given that staff is no longer giving that option. Is that the question?
Yeah, I believe that that was, I believe that that's exactly what Blake said during our presentation last time was that the problem's not going to continue to happen because it's been addressed.
But again, this is Adam, the only way to guarantee that is to change the rules and ordinances to actually say, we do not accept, accept it. Period. Because there will always be a choice that people want to do because it's easier to wait.
I don't know, my, my, can you hear me okay?
For right now, it seems like we can hear everybody when you first say, can you hear me? And then after that is when we quit hearing everybody.
I'm not sure that these two issues are in principle the same thing. And I understand this idea of saying, we didn't want to do it because it was on an island and it was weird to have 100 yards of sidewalk all by itself in the middle of nowhere. On the other hand, what we're saying is, we're going to let you pay in today's dollars what the cost of that would be. And then Harriman taxpayers are going to make up the rest of what it might cost down the road at a future time when it makes sense to connect it all together. That just doesn't seem responsible to me. I, I, I think if you're going to develop a property, you, you do the development of the property, which includes the landscaping, which includes the park strips, which includes the detention ponds. Paying this fee in lieu, I think, is, is a bad policy. And I, if it's not prohibited yet, I think we need to take the actions to make that a prohibited practice in the city. I, I support what Adam said.
I mean, you need ordinance, not to place staff control this, because I love our staff, but that doesn't mean it's always going to happen.
Sorry, it was hard to hear you, Adam.
I said, I love our staff and I know that they have every intention, but without it being in an ordinance that makes it through that ability is still there.
If we don't, we're going to put a 10% addition of the cost on top for timing.
Yeah, but we already did it in August, we put another 12%.
Yeah, I'm saying like to the developer, if you want to do lieu and fee, then you're going to pay the cost plus X amount because only execute on that, I don't know.
Too far down that particular road. Yeah. I'm seeing my, I'm seeing the city attorney go, we'd have to really look at that before we even began to think about that. So let's be really careful about making proposals. But what I, what it sounds like to me is that most of the planning commission would be in support of saying that we just change our, our policy or our ordinance to say that we don't allow fee. Am I correct?
We have something across the table that says, yeah, we have this development, two or three lots, and we have fee in lieu for sidewalk here. And there's a chance there will never be a sidewalk. And there's a fee in lieu because of how it came to us, it's required. The city takes the fee in lieu, so if it ever happens. So I look at it from the perspective that there are still times where fee in lieu makes sense. But my question is, is all of the city ordinance where it's, we're never going to do a fee in lieu? Because it's hard for me to imagine with a handful of developments. And I'll take for instance, there's a road not too far from the cemetery, that's a dirt road, has four houses on it. Just came through, both city council and city planning commission. Well, they're going to be paying a fee in lieu for that sidewalk that should go there if they were a subdivision. Well, guess what, guys, there's a chance there will never be a sidewalk there because of choices that we make as a city. And so if we require it, it will be an island potentially forever where we have a sidewalk for 30 feet. And so, so there are, there are some times where I think there's exceptions to the rule. We just need to be mindful of that as we go through this process.
I just want to.
It varies per exception to the rule rather than the opposite way.
There could be, and that's something, I mean, this is a lot bigger discussion, I think, than the discussion we started with.
Right.
The discussion we started with was, what order do we go with those that already were supposed to be doing? And, and, and I have opinion on this too, and, and there is one question that I wanted to ask Jonathan. How many of these, because sometimes we have a fee in lieu that comes through, the development takes eight years to do. And then all of a sudden, we're looking at 2004, but they didn't get done till 2012. And, and so, I mean, there are some exceptions. And Jonathan, like with some of these, are there exceptions to the rule based off these that you, you showed us? That we should be aware of in our decision-making process?
Um, Chris, I, to be honest with you, I don't know off the top of my head which one are, but they would appear to be pretty rare in those cases where they've been approved or entitled back in 2002 and the improvements along, you know, the frontage of a road or whatnot would be, you know, a long time later. I don't know if that is really a prevailing scenario. But, but I would say to add to your thoughts is, in, in some cases where, and it, I guess the point I wanted to bring across as well is, in, in many cases, there are roadway improvements where a fee in lieu, if collected, might be a tool to have in your back pocket. If otherwise, they would have constructed it and when the design would have ended up being different for the roadway in its entirety, it would necessitate removing that concrete or sidewalk or curb and gutter. And then we end up having to pay money to demo and redo sidewalk and curb and gutter and whatnot. So anyway, just throwing that out there, there might be a tool, it might be useful to have that in your back pocket for these cases. And I, and Chris, I hope I answered your question.
Are you referencing something similar to the 711 that just went in where they removed all the sidewalk because they needed to? And then they're going to be putting it back in, something like that?
Similar to, I would think that would, I'm, I'm thinking more along the lines of, so, so that, I, I actually don't think we could ever get away from that because I think they were just installing a drive approach. But I think the cases that I'm thinking of in my mind, in just a particular case, like Gina Road. The design for Gina Road, we have actually a tentative design that's actually sitting in our coffers, but there might be some roads that are unfinished where we do not have a design and the developer is ready to move forward. And then so it would behoove us to have a design to move forward. Otherwise, we're installing without having, you know, knowing where to place it correctly. And the plan even may not be defined at that time what it looks like along that roadway.
But Jonathan, I want to ask a question because I just want to be clear about this. This particular discussion is relating to detention ponds and park strips. And my comments about prohibiting the fee in lieu would be related to detention ponds and park strips. I'm completely at ease with the idea that there may be appropriate times to use feed in lieu for a street design or, you know, some of the examples maybe, maybe Chris brought up, but as it relates to park strips and ponds, I'd really like us to figure out, to, to really evaluate whether or not that should be prohibited. I just don't see much merit in us taking a feed in lieu for putting grass in a pond. That just doesn't make sense to me.
This is Adam, I agree.
Did you have some comments?
Like park strips and ponds need to be finished. And I personally would argue even sidewalks, sidewalk can be ripped out and they need to be providing safe walking paths for people forever. I agree that maybe curb and gutter and true street improvements and most of the areas you guys are all describing are where we actually have capital facilities plans anyway for other roadways in the future. So I get the fee in lieu for those points. But I agree with what you're saying is the ponds and the park strips need to be completed.
Yeah, I, I would say that's a really good delineation, a very good point, absolutely. I would say that we, we would just want to then at that point make sure we have delineation between, you know, so maybe not necessarily a fee in lieu is a blanket thing that we don't ever do, right? But if it's, if it's something where we have those knowns in our belt and we're ready to move forward, that's obviously the, the direction we proceed, absolutely.
All right, Clint, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to comment, obviously, I think, again, we are, we really have two different discussions here. One is prioritization of the unfinished products, which I think is our task at hand tonight, to, to get some direction on prioritization. And I think the fee in lieu ties into that, but it's a separate discussion that we probably should have at another time because to the points that have already been made, I do think that there are appropriate times to have, to be able to consider a fee in lieu for all the reasons that are already stated. So like you say, I think we can have that discussion, but for purposes of tonight, I think we need to give, to be able to ride the direction of prioritization of those outstanding projects that exist. And we work on fixing the other gaps in the system moving forward.
Thank you, Clint. And, and I think from the perspective, at least myself, realistically, those that have paid a fee in lieu should probably be prioritized towards the top. If I, if I remember correctly, Jonathan, based on that, that sheet that you had up earlier, there were what, about three or four of them, and they actually were some of the smaller ones. The larger one that looked like it was 300 and something thousand dollars had no fee in lieu. And so those are some smaller projects as well where a fee in lieu was paid. And then I think it comes down to a priority on, on community use after that. Because some of these larger ones may become a priority over the smaller ones that haven't had a fee in lieu because the community will use them more. And so I think, at least in my opinion, the ones that have paid should be prioritized. And then it comes to area and usage that, that probably comes into next priority. I, I would like to step in here and, and agree in principle to that as well. I think that I would like to see if there's some that we can get knocked out immediately simply because of their size and the cost, that, that's relatively insignificant, why not get them done? After that, I do think that we need to take into consideration size of that. And more importantly than size, the number of people, the number of residents affected by that particular pond in a, I don't know, a 300 or a, a thousand foot radius. To me, that I think is an important factor as we're trying to prioritize. I agree that we should get as many of them done as quickly as we can. But if we have, you know, three residents affected and, and one project, at a similar project that might be a year older that affects 100 residents, in my opinion, we got, we, we should prioritize the one that affects 100, 100 residents over the one that affects three residents. And not that those residents aren't valid, but I would like to see our money do the most good for the most people, you know, as, as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mary.
So I also have something to add on that, like the two that are not, there are no fee in lieu of the Berwick one and two. I'm looking at the drawing on my other screen. Those were proved back before I even was involved with the city, we're talking 2002 at timeframe. And those have never, they've always been open space. I know that they're a pain for the city to deal with, but that, those residents and those homes, I've been in those detention ponds when I used to work for the city directly, they don't care. They like it that way. So those two, to me, I don't even know why they're on the list. That's, that's a maintenance issue and I understand that we might want to fix them up from a maintenance perspective. But those definitely shouldn't even be on the list.
Yeah, hey, Adam, those are straight away for me and our kids go there all the time growing up to go ride their bikes and everything.
In that dirt, right? I'll, I'll be honest, in six, I think I was talking about putting grass in there and everybody had an uproar about those ones. Because they're tied in space right next to it, right?
That's right, yeah, the trail's right there, it's easy access for the kids. They'll come in and they use it as their dirt bike, you know, not motorbikes, just their pedal bikes to go in and tour around. So yeah, make sure we know which, which ones we're prioritizing and really what the need is because there are uses for those right now as they are.
Yeah, it sounds like you may be able to mark some of them off that list already. So, all right.
Can I make one other comment? I think that there, some of these issues may be public safety too. I mean, if we have a park strip along a major road, I think that would probably be something to prioritize over a small collector road type of issue, right? Just, just in public safety is part of our criteria for decision-making.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other comments on item 1.2 or can we move on to item 1.3? All right, item 1.3, discussion of draft general plan update. And we'll look at Suzie to help present it. I think she has some nice handouts and presentations and this is it. No, I don't think the handouts are. But Suzie, we're looking at you now. We can't hear you right now.
Great, can you hear me now, okay, Chris?
We can, we can, thank you.
Great, okay, looks like we've got the share screen going. I'm going to go ahead and spring that up and is everybody able to, to see that okay on the screen?
We can.
All right, great, now I can't see it. There we go. Okay. Don't want to be doing anything. There we go, okay, great. So just wanted to give an overview of where we are with the, the general plan. And been working with the, the planning commission over the last month or two. We did a great field trip on September 3rd and sort of toured a few key sites around the city to help us with the future land use decisions. And then had a work session that day before the planning commission meeting. We met again on the 17th in a work session, both before the, the regular planning commission meeting and then reconvened after that regular meeting was done and sort of have the, the long haul version of the, of the work session there. So moving on, just wanted to start by giving just a framework for the discussion tonight. Going to give you an overview of the, the draft plan, its structure and some of the, the highlights of the draft plan by each of the, the four city districts. And then we just wanted to give a summary overview of some of the, the key comments and feedback on the draft plan sections that have come out of our discussions with the planning commission. So we've got the, the vision, the values and the priorities and the key initiatives, the future land use and development pattern and the action plan strategies. And those have all been reviewed with feedback and input by the planning commission. And then we'll finish with next steps. So let me quick. Let's see, is my side screen blocking the view of the presentation on your end or is it just on mine?
I think it's just your end.
Okay, great, we'll move on. So, so just an overview of the structure of the draft plan and the way it will look. We've got it starting with the, the community context chapter. And that gets an overview of the context of the city, some key stats and background and history, the regional context, what's happening both in the surrounding communities and the region as a whole. And then just a quick overview of the general plan process, some of the, the feedback and the, the meetings and why the city has a general plan. We're trying to keep this intersection pretty brief so that for any existing conditions that will be an appendix that people can refer to if needed and the city can update a little bit more frequently without needing to redo the whole general plan. The next chapter is the main one that sets the framework for the community vision. And that's where the values and the priorities are and the four key themes and focus initiatives that have come out of the, the general plan process. The main focus then is the future land use and development pattern chapter where we have some expanded detail for the future land use categories and talk about how those are then structured into the different neighborhoods and neighborhood typology of Harriman. We have a short section where we're linking to the different elements of other city plans, the modern income housing, the transportation master plan, economic development strategy plan and the, the recently updated parks and open space plan. The concluding portion is the, the action plan, making it happen where we have some key strategies and action items for the city to follow to help implement the general plan. Okay, so our district highlights for the four districts, you know, we just touched on a few of the, the key items that have come out of the process. District one up there on the north side, you know, one of the, the key items is just ensuring that there are connection and access to the open spaces of Harriman. There's going to be some great parks up there, but just having that access to the foothills and natural open spaces on the south and west sides of Harriman will be a key aspect of that district. For the future land use, it's mainly been a calibration of the existing map and just making sure that it's matching up with the way developments have transpired in the last few years. But also looking to use the future land use to frame opportunities for potential annexation areas to the west and making sure that the way the future land use map is set up is to maximize opportunities and minimize impacts on the existing community of Harriman. For the commercial development that's up there, especially on the, the northeast corner of Harriman, just considering how to be flexible with commercial development standards, knowing that retail is changing even more and knowing that what might be viable for a big box right now may need to split up into some smaller stores down the road and just ensuring that the city is as ready to be flexible in that regard. For community character, that's sort of the north end of the, the older town portion of Harriman and the community heritage, but then also recognizing that District one is the northern gateway into the city of Harriman and making sure that we're maximizing that entrance into the city. For District two, again, talking about the connections and access to open space. Some great open spaces integrated into those neighborhoods. But again, ensuring that residents in the community there have a good and easy access to the foothills and natural open spaces surrounding Harriman. The future land use, sorry, did you have a comment? Okay. The future land use, so just calibrating the existing, much as in District one and looking at some potential expansion or extension of some commercial nodes in these areas mainly based on future transportation investments. If you look at the updates to the long-range regional transportation plan, there's new road extensions and alignments that are going to be coming down and impacting where those major corridors are intersecting and making sure that the city is prepared to take advantage of that with potential commercial nodes that are most likely going to be on the neighborhood scale, smaller nodes, not taking away from any of the, the more commercial, major commercial areas closer to Mountain View. At this neighborhood, the neighborhoods in District two, we really feel provide a good visual reference and standard for the different development typologies of Harriman. So we'll be using some of those visuals in the, the general plan as far as imagery. The community character, we've got the, the Harriman Old Town, but also the town center, making sure that that continues as the civic and cultural core of the city. Uh, making sure that that continues as the civic and cultural core of the city. Uh, in District Three, uh, we've got that great access to open spaces. And want to make sure that we're preserving, uh, the views and keeping that in mind when we talk about, uh, the future land use categories. Uh, so the future land use, we just want to use District in District Three, making sure that we're providing and ensuring, um, opportunities for, um, some more rural lots and larger lots. Having some community character that is relying on preserving the visual open spaces in this district. Providing opportunities for things like equestrian neighborhoods. And then also recognizing that as Herman and the region can use develop, uh, this will become the western gateway, uh, to Herman. From the west side. Uh, so in District Four, um, we've got the proximity and access, uh, to, uh, the open spaces. And I'm just going to try to move things around a little bit so I can see my slides better. Uh, again, preserving the views of those foothills, making sure that development, uh, is sensitive to protecting those views. Uh, for the future land use, this is where a lot of the, the great future opportunities are. Uh, both current, current and future activity centers down in the southeast corner. Uh, looking to ensure that the access and visibility that is needed for more commercial or office development is situated appropriately. And minimizing the impacts on the foothills with the development types. For the community character, again, just preserving those visual open spaces. Protecting the scenic views of the foothills and ensuring that the southern gateway into the city is a positive one. So I'm just going to quickly run through, um, some of the, the key points of the, the feedback that we've received and the, the outline of the plan. Uh, that first, um, main chapter that we reviewed with the planning commission, the Herman values and priorities. Uh, what does Herman value? You know, what we've heard consistently is, you know, those open spaces being an activated style. Ready to access the outdoors. And the scenic views. Uh, the priorities that will come out of the process. Uh, ensuring that quality open spaces are preserved and enhanced throughout the city. Uh, that the city is physically stable and prepared, uh, for change. Um, as the, the market changes and needs change over time. Uh, with the community character, just capturing the balance and diversity in different development standards. Looking to leverage the assets of Herman and cater to community character with the types of amenities that are provided. Again, circling back to that love of the outdoors and the recreation. Um, how can those amenities be structured to, uh, the things that community values right now? Uh, looking to, uh, create a safe transportation and a connected network. Looking to the, the regional network and development intensity and making sure that, that we're matching. Uh, those infrastructure investments with where development intensity is catered. Uh, the employment opportunities, looking to support, um, people that work at home, uh, which we're all doing a lot of right now. But also startups and entrepreneurs, um, by looking to implement, uh, citywide fiber. Uh, the mix of housing types, that's something that we want to look at, um, citywide, but also within neighborhoods. And ensuring that there's a diversity of housing types, um, both on the affordable side and the luxury side. And either the, the townhomes as well as the, the rural properties, uh, where somebody might be able to have a large lot. But maybe a smaller home and have room for, um, a horse or agricultural operations. The key focus initiatives, uh, there's four of them. We have growing wisely, uh, optimizing open spaces. Maximizing unique fiscal opportunities and enhancing and supporting community and culture. Uh, the main feedback, uh, that we received in the discussion with the planning commission is for the first one. Uh, that growing wisely, ensure that we're addressing both economic sustainability. Uh, and preserving opportunities for development, uh, to come into Herman, but then also be flexible over time. Uh, with the, the open spaces, you know, one of the things that we've heard a lot is to make sure that, the open spaces that are coming out of development agreements is quality open spaces and not just the, the unbuildable land. But how can we, um, continue to ensure quality open spaces as Herman develops and builds out? Uh, with the third initiative, just looking to, uh, enhance and support Herman's character with those unique fiscal opportunities, uh, whether it's recreation venues or, um, office and business parks. Uh, just looking to make sure that they, uh, support Herman's, Herman's character, um, as it continues to grow. Uh, and then sort of the flip side, uh, with the fourth one is just leveraging opportunities uh, to bring in quality of life amenities, uh, for Herman residents. Uh, the future land use categories, we've got three main categories, residential and neighborhood, which are really the foundation for, uh, retaining the character of Herman. And offering housing choices. You've got the mixed use and commercial categories. These are the fuel for keeping the community physically sustainable and providing those services and amenities. And then the civic and community categories, and these are the links for keeping the community connected, um, socially and culturally. And also being environmentally sustainable. So in the, the residential and neighbor categories, uh, right now we have the, the five different categories. Low density residential and then going into neighborhood residential one and two. And then creating two mixed use neighborhoods that are a little bit on the higher density end. Uh, one of the discussion items that came out of the planning commission is a desire to, to have another category on the lower end for those larger lots in the foothills or rural residential. So that's something that, that will add in, uh, to the draft plan. Uh, the and mixed use categories, we have a, a general retail category. Uh, but then also adding in one that is specific to neighborhood commercial nodes. Uh, as we talked about having amenities within neighborhoods as appropriate. Uh, we want to make sure that we have a, a way to identify a difference between what those neighborhood commercial nodes are and the general retail. Uh, that is a little bit more based on the tax base and the proximity and access to Mountain View corridor. Uh, we have an employment campus, business park category. Uh, again, looking to create a little bit more of a framework for the development pattern as a campus rather than, uh, just individual developments. An office mixed use category where we know that retail mixed use is not always feasible. Uh, but an office mixed use is a category, uh, that, that could come into play in the future. And then switching that recreational resort into more of a destination activity node. Uh, thinking of it as a revenue generator, uh, both indirectly and directly, um, rather than a residential category. And then the last one is an education village. Uh, these are for areas, um, like around the Salt Lake Community College campus or the potential future, uh, Utah State University campus and the, the annexation area on the northwest. Looking at those not just as campuses with different residential neighborhoods, but as a mixed use village as a whole. Uh, to ensure that the development pattern is incorporating, uh, the housing types closer to the campus, uh, that support that campus. And transitioning to some of the other, uh, traditional residential neighborhoods around. Our civic and community, uh, categories, uh, we've got one, uh, that captures the civic and community, the schools, the libraries and the city facilities. Uh, one that is for parks and process, more of the structured open space. And then the space category that is more passive. Uh, the last one combines utilities and support services, uh, just things like the water and the power, uh, and the military, um, areas of Herman. Uh, the last, um, section that we've reviewed and the feedback from, uh, the planning commission are the action plan strategies. Uh, there are 24 of them, um, and the ones in green are the ones that, uh, the planning commission had the most comment on. Uh, where we talked about having some design standards for new development, uh, just looking to, uh, ensure that we're flexible in those development standards for commercial, uh, but also be flexible in, uh, single family residential neighborhoods as well. Uh, creating an overlay for Old Town, that's something that's been in past general plans. Uh, but looking to try to move forward with that and know that it's going to be designating some landmark structures. But also looking at development standards that, that fit into the Old Town, uh, character rather than assuming, uh, infrastructure standards for the city as a whole, uh, match the look and feel of Old Town. Uh, looking to create a conservation overlay, uh, category for Old Town, uh, to implement, uh, some of those recommendations. Uh, looking to update the zoning for a mix of housing types. Uh, this is something that the future land use categories are looking to, uh, be a little bit more detailed in regard to, uh, net density and average density, uh, versus the range of gross density. Uh, but ensuring that the zoning categories, uh, can support and implement, um, sort of that, that targeted range of dwelling types. Within the future land use categories, having the zoning to match that. Uh, it's the city standards for trails, uh, that's something to just have a consistent framework. Um, for, uh, new developments as they come in, uh, referring to the city standards. I know the Parks and Open Space Plan has some recommendations, but just looking to get those implemented, uh, for future developments as they occur. Uh, defining the city's gateways, uh, we talked about this in the, the district overview. Just recognizing that, that north gateway, but also the opportunities as the city grows for the southern and western gateways. Uh, connections to the trail system, as we talked about, just Herman City, uh, does a great job of providing parks and open space. And just making sure that the connections, uh, to the trail system are convenient and safe, uh, throughout the city. Uh, and knowing that the different neighborhood types might have different types of connections. And ensuring that we're context sensitive and how that happens. Last one we talked about was just expanding city programming, uh, just circling back to some of the comments that we heard throughout the process. Uh, just having things, uh, like the farmer's market and continuing to enhance, um, the opportunities at city center. But also looking, uh, to provide, uh, expanded recreation opportunities and recreation centers. Uh, knowing that there's a diversity and the types of recreation and the population and demographics of Herman as it grows. And ensuring that there is, um, a wide range of opportunities throughout the city. But that's the last slide and if there's any questions, um, we can take that. And Chris or Michael, if you have anything to add, uh, to build off of the discussion that we had at our work sessions. Um, please feel free to jump in.
Suzie, you, you did a really good job touching on pretty much everything we talked about. I want to reiterate some of the ones that we spoke about, even though you did talk about them. Just, just because that gives the city council opportunity to see some areas that we spoke about in more detail and emphasized. So I'm going to go through, uh, the zone for horses. Some of the thought of that was larger lots, smaller footprint homes required. And then fencing requirement differences, so different requirements for it. But as we know, sometimes the community that really is horseback riders, that they're more likely to be outside with their horses than inside this huge 5,000 square foot house. And so, um, we also talked about a zone for flex spaces, which, which, uh, also went into limiting big box stores. And when we say limiting, we're more along the lines of, if we allow them to come in, we need to have a backup option to be able to have the ability to transition them easier into flex spaces. And so if they do come in, that's fine, but putting some type of requirements to where how they bu- build them allows us to downsize it quickly. If something happens. Um, citywide fiber, we view that as really important for the infrastructure overall, just in general. Um, setback adjustments, which we talked about a little bit more in detail as well. Just that a lot of these, um, areas, there are setbacks and a great example was that same day, um, prior to this discussion. Um, or actually it was in between this discussion, we had a window well that touched the neighbor's fence. And so it actually wasn't code, it was a major problem, but that's an example of how, how the setbacks could be changed just from the edge of the window well versus the edge of the houses. And so average lot sizes in zones, um, the hope of that is, is that no longer are we having these clusters. Because they have to hit an average within that zone. And so it changes the whole scenario of what they can build. Um, and I think it meets more than what we hope to see in these zones. Um, if we're, I know the community, when they see something that says we're 1.8 units per acre. They think they're going to get 1.8 units on the acre. And instead we get six units per acre on 200 acres on the part that was built. And so it's not what the community thinks is supposed to be happening. And it's a, it's a big miscommunication through the process. Um, and then this was something that I spoke about a little bit more and not, not everyone. But, um, just, just also having a potential plan, um, with the property that we have set aside for tracks in case it doesn't go in. I think the general plan is a great place to put that. So, because we're relying on someone that we have no control over if we get tracks or not. Or some of the, the, the different types of transit like that. Um, which we also spoke about. Um, if, if that, i- if we aren't going to get tracks or if that does occur, which we hope doesn't. But if it does, maybe, um, local transit of a little bus line through Herman is something that we plan versus allowing the state to decide how that works or you don't. Um, and then just the last one is getting a better picture of everything with checking with GIS. Uh, where the gaps of the size of houses are in our community, I think we all know. But it, it's always nice to be able to see it on a piece of paper. Um, if that's, we have a whole bunch of under 1.15 units per acre. Um, we have some that are higher, but we're missing a big gap between point two to point three or point one five to point two five, um, uh, acres. Uh, so a quarter acre lots or things like that. It'd be nice to know exactly. So as we get these NDAs that come through and we have them come through the city, we know that we have, we have a gap in our city already. And so we focus on that. So that was some of it. I'm sure city planning commission may have a couple more they won't add to that. But that was some of the areas we emphasized, which by the way, Suzie, you touched on all of them very well. So.
Thanks, Chris. And I think, you know, just to, to circle back, I think one of the, one of the things that we're really trying to do with this updated general plan is to, um, just clearly meet and define expectations. And so, like you said, when people hear, you know, 1.8 dwelling units per acre, they think one thing. Um, what we're trying to do with the updated future land use categories and, um, description and detail is to just give a much clearer picture so that the expectations that people have, um, are aligned with what actually gets built.
Additional comments or discussion from council or planning commission?
I'm just really excited to do a draft plan.
Do you, do you want to address that, Suzie? Or Michael?
Sure. Um, yeah, so we are taking, we've taken all the comments that we've received on the, the draft, um, content from the planning commission. Uh, we're putting that in the, the formatted version of the general plan. And then we need to just circle back to calibrate the future land use map. And we are set to do that at the October 15th meeting with the planning commission. And then we will have that ready for, um, and just access on the, the city's website. And looking to create an online format for receiving comment on the draft plan. Uh, and then looking to target, um, bringing that back to the planning commission in November, uh, for a public hearing. Uh, and to discuss the comments that have been received from the, the public.
So the city council should have a copy of this draft by the end of October, is that correct?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll start, we'll have that, that draft after the, the October 15th planning commission.
Okay, we look forward to seeing that.
Thank you. Any additional comments or discussion? Alright, thank you.
I do have one point, one question, um, kind of coming here. I- i- in some of these design elements that are being discussed, action plans, um, there's mention about, uh, mixed use and, and even developing, uh, you know, housing types to around the school, those kinds of things. I'm not sure where those, um, housing priorities are necessarily coming from per se. Um, I mean, I've been doing a lot of research, I was reading just an article literally this afternoon. Talking about how millennials a couple of years ago when surveyed were looking at, you know, certain kinds of, of housing and, and certain kinds of needs. And more recently, they are saying they want single family detached housing above all else. That is the key part of the American dream. That is what people want. More recently, they are saying they want single family detached housing above all else, that is the key part of the American dream, that is what people want. I'm not so sure that a commuter campus, community college needs to have apartments and. Attached housing all around it to support a support the school, that just doesn't seem to make sense to me. I'm not so sure that a mix of housing types is what the residents of Harriman are really looking for in their future plans. Or at least not as diverse a a product types as as we're we're currently offering. I I'm just not sure where these priorities of housing type are coming, and I just am curious as to. What specific feedback from the surveys, what comments from the community is suggesting that that is the appropriate. Steps to take in the future as opposed to just building. More detached, single family homes, I mean, and Chris, you were you're talking about, do we have a gap in housing? I'm not necessarily convinced that we need to have a certain distribution of housing in all these different places in the community. I'm not sure that's what our residents want. So my question is, what feedback from the community suggests that's the way we need to do it?
So a couple items, so when I mentioned a gap, that comes from a lot of what comes across and is approved. And then what is not being placed. So for instance, a lot of the townhomes. Where individuals are living and then they're moving up or out, or like you said, unattached housing. They're not finding inventory. And 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 I reference this from communities around me where they're moving out of Harriman because they cannot find it. We look at around Big Bend and how quickly those units have gone. I mean, they're gone as soon as they're built. And and granted, that's most of Harriman, but it seems like if you look at the counts of what we do have and what we don't have. It seems like we have a very large amount of attached units, townhomes. Then we have a smaller up top where it's larger lots, which is normal. And then we're having what's been built very little in that gap of after townhomes. And that's where the percentages and where we hear some feedback. Obviously, the the concept or the idea is seeing how many people are moving out of townhomes and where they're going. And are are we missing out on, like you said, those unattached homes? And what size is realistic for our community? I'll tell you now, and it's already been approved but not built, around Salt Lake Community College, they already will have those apartments and the townhomes. And high density is already approved there. It's going to be going in, a master development agreement was signed a while ago, there's not really much that's that's per se going to be done there. And so so we already have still in the future, a lot of. What I consider the higher density or attached homes, and that's why I look at it from the idea of there's still a gap here. Because individuals that go from townhomes or condos don't typically jump to third acres or half acres, there are exceptions. But typically, if they want to move up, they typically go to a point 1.5, 1.8 to a point 2.5. That's and and we don't see a lot of those come across the planning commission anymore. They just, they're not occurring as often.
And I guess my question is this, that. I know there's certain things that are already entitled that we don't have any ability to really impact very much. My question is, with the limited amount of land that is still available, that we would be looking to plan. Are all these things mixed use, attached, all these different property types, is that really what our community has said they want built? Connect between what I hear the feedback from our residents.
That's a great question from the city council, I want to hear as well. That that's a great question. We have four different councilmen from four different districts that that probably have a pretty good idea of what they're being asked for from their community as well.
Well, and Steve, I think, I think what you're getting at too is when we looked at this. We recognize what was already being built, and it's a lot of the high density. So our effort to say we want a mixed. Use was saying, okay, we're probably hit the target with a lot of the higher density stuff. Now we need to balance it with the other stuff. So we're saying, because our job is not just to look at. Just the just the empty spaces, we're trying to do a general plan for the whole city. So there are areas that are already. You know, out there for identity, so now we're saying we need a mix. And that's what, really, that's where our focus has been on is, like Chris is saying, that's what we're trying to fill that balance is.
And some of what we look at is. Well, we also look off of Redwood.
What that what that means, but. I'm not so sure that continuing to build percentages of all of these different kinds of properties is really what's best. More what you're saying is, we need properties that are filling in these gaps. And 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 perhaps I'm misunderstanding what you mean by.
I would love to see that.
I think if we were going to say, what should we build next? We should build a lot more single family detached housing because I think that's what's really needed in our community. And so and so when we talk about building more mixed, it's almost like, well. I don't know if we need more apartments or we need more condos or we need more townhouses, I think we need more of something else, and that's a disproportionate mix. And so I guess that's one of my questions.
Frankly, Steve, that's the reason why I'm so eager to get a copy of this. Is because we still have, as a council, we still haven't seen it. And so until we see.
So I agree with what what Steve's saying, I agree with everybody was saying, but the fact is, we're trying to get to an actual number because nobody can tell us what our actual numbers are of the densities.
And that's why we're saying a look up of GIS and then a look up with what is estimated to be built after that. We have thousands of homes that have already been approved. That we don't know where does that fall in this category really well, where we're like, here's our category, I mean. We got some number where we're in the 40 something percent is townhomes, that's way too high.
But but Chris, what I was trying to say is the part we're missing, and we had this when Suzie presented the maps. If you look at what they're calling. Large lots. It is not the density we're even talking about. And so what we're trying to do is the statistics between what is the actual lot size and what, how many other zones do we really need to have? Really spell out what we're asking for. So when you say single family detached, do you mean? Quarter acre to third acres, because that I think is where the gap is. We do have a.
All different lot sizes, right? I mean, there's there's there's, but there's a difference between attached housing and detached housing. I I think that people have voiced a continued preference through surveys, through. Even anecdotal companies, that's the desire, that's the American dream, that is what builds communities, that's what creates stability.
Steve, I have a question for you off of that, is it the point oh eight? Where, I mean, you are three feet from your neighbor and you have a backyard the size of four feet by four feet. Is that what they're asking for? Because that's detached. And and the problem is, is with our zones and with master development agreements and what we've seen come across on the from the planning commission. They'll say, okay. On my master development agreement, I it says I have to have detached. Now, I'm going to make them detached, but I'm going to cluster them here and they're going to be as little as I can get them and still meet into my loopholes. And that's how it feels a lot of times when we see it come through, we know the intention was, give us a balance. And if 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 we had received a balance of these home sizes, you would, I don't think we'd be having this conversation in this way.
But but I'll use, as plenty knows, I always use Rose Creek, Rose Creek. Clinton lives there, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. In Rose Creek, you have a variety of different size lots. You go from almost over an acre down to a third acre. But if you go look at that density, actually, they go even down to a quarter acre and 10,000 square foot lots, but if you go down and look at density. That density is what we're actually saying is the same density as some of these PUDs that come in, jack in 1,000. 5,000 square foot lots. And that's where we need to have that discussion is, what do we need to do to get the more of what I'll call the Rose Creek like development to get you that first.
Or the average lot size where we want it.
Steve, we're not saying we want.
So and and again, we haven't seen the plan, but advocating for updated or better zoning descriptions that are more accurately reflective of the housing types we really want to have.
And I'll tell you, when they come to the planning commission where we. Have the least ability to make an impact is when there's a master development agreement that allows them to cluster it wherever they want. And and the intention wasn't that, that wasn't the intention of how that was built out. But all of a sudden, we see them just clustering and and it's little lots and townhomes and little, 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 and then all of a sudden, they're like, we're giving the city all of a sudden a look at this. And none of it's even usable. And and so that, and I think we've improved our process with master development agreements, and we still probably need to a little bit, it's fair to say. But but that's where a lot of, I mean, we sit here on the planning commission, look at it and say. I don't know how that meets the general plan. I don't know how that meets zoning, but there's a master development agreement which tells us that we have to do it.
And the example is the one that you get out with the dancy property. For example, we we all looked at that master plan and we all expected an average lot size of 6,000 square feet. We saw as a planning commission, we would see some 4,000s and some 10,000s, but they would average out to 6,000 square foot lots. When it came in, it was barely 6,000 square foot lots as many as I can jam into there. And that is the issue we're trying to get to with these numbers and why we've asked Suzie to give us those numbers, and we still have yet to see those numbers. And she knows that that's a big interest to all of us planning commissioners, as we talked about it till midnight the last time we talked about this.
I think that's a substantial interest to the members of the city council, too.
So what I'm saying is, that's what we need first, but I agree, all the text in the beautification discussion is a good topic, but the data is what we need to see.
Well, and Steve, we're not saying, like when when you're saying, I think what I I know what you're saying, we're not recommending as a commission more high density. We're saying, this is already being built. So what we want to see is the balance which is going to offset that. So we're not recommending moving forward a balance. We're saying now we need to bring it into balance, well, we need to bring it into balance, that's what we're saying.
And and one of the other discussions in this, because you talked about the mixed use. Is we have commercial and we have different areas where commercial is proposed, there's a possibility that we may never use it. But our concept is if that doesn't become commercial, where's the next step of what we'd like to see? And that may be mixed use. Because it still has a commercial element to it, and we're not sure, but but. To have it cleaned up, to understand what that zone means and how we want to use it is what's really important. We have a lot of zones in there that that the intention is exactly what we all want to see here. And what it has become of how that zone has been used is nowhere near what we wanted to see. And and that's the problem with some of how this has occurred. And and we're hoping with the general plan, we find a balance of it, and Suzie's had some recommendations. With working off a net instead of gross, and it changes how that stuff works out, which she can explain in further detail than I can. But there's different ways to help protect that a little bit better, and I think it's what has to be looked at. There is some stuff that we're going to have to look at in the past that that we don't have a lot of control over, that we need to just do the best we can with.
Sure.
So a couple, couple quick comments.
Just one, just my last statement, confess a lot of ignorance about this process, right? This is my first time through it, I. I'm trying to figure this out, I hope that. The result of this is that those specific suggestions and changes and problems that you're seeing in zoning. Are really clearly communicated to us as a council, so we have. A really good basis to take action on so that we we can make those changes or propose those changes in a way. That's going to better fulfill and empower you as a planning commission to make. What we all want to happen actually happen. So my 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 hope is that that all of those little specific things are really clearly communicated through this process.
And there's really two things as a planning commission where we make our decisions off of. The general plan, well, three, the zoning and the ordinances. If we're not protected with any of that, then as long as the developer or builder comes to us and then meets those three criterias, we have to approve it. And so that's where we look at your help, because it's something that the city council changes. We did, it's just a guideline for us with how we make decisions. Uh, Clint?
And so just a couple of quick comments. Obviously, there's been a ton of data, there's been a ton of outreach as part of this process. And I think that they've done a very good job in coalescing all of that data in. Because when you ask, when you ask 10 people to describe the exact same thing in front of them, you're going to get 10 different descriptions. And so coalescing that data is is, I think, has been a monumental task, and I think they've done a good job of doing that. And I definitely agree with the concept of. Filling the gap and having a diverse. Housing type available. I think it's really easy to to your comment a few minutes ago, Steve, I think it's really easy for. Doesn't matter what what group you want to ask about, whether it's millennials, whether it's Gen Xs, whoever it is. To say, what type of housing type do you prefer for them to say, well, single family? But the question is, there's two pieces to that. One, what is their definition of single family? Is it 6,000 square foot lots? Or is it a third acre? And and I think our job is to provide all of those options within our community. So that whether you're starting out, whether you're moving to the next phase, or whether you're at the end of it, you have those options available. And the other thing that hasn't been talked about, which is hard to do, especially when it comes to what what's your housing type preference, everyone's going to say single family that. You know, the whole American dream, you know, big yard, pickup fence out front, those types of things, but the the one thing, and it's a four letter word, but I'm going to say it, is affordability. And how does affordability factor into all of this? Because not only is that something that we need to be considering. For our our community and being able to allow everyone that wants to be part of our community to be here. But it's also now a requirement of the state legislature that we look at affordability and how we do that. So I think all of those things have to be have to be kept in mind as we go through the process and trying to figure out what that dispersment is, what that. Mix of types is and how that looks for our community moving forward. I think everyone agrees that because it's the easiest and to to do right off the bat, the multifamily. I think everyone agrees we have plenty of that, and the numbers show that we do. How do we balance that out? How do we balance that out with the right types of to fit each individual person's definition or desire moving forward? And that's a challenging thing to do, but that's our job to do.
And and we still, and to be honest, we as a planning commission still talked about some areas that we believe high density makes sense. And one of those areas potentially could be off of Redwood, in between Redwood and and Mountview. Because those are both like the transit corridors are right there, it doesn't congest the middle of the city. There are areas where apartment buildings can still make a lot of sense for our city and still been in that criteria of what Clint said in affordability. And affordable housing that's required by the state. Now, would would I recommend you go put that on the west bench? No, I don't. I mean, and that's some of what this general plan is supposed to help us accomplish.
And and to the point you were making, the data about the number of units we actually have and the number of units we've already entitled. Definitely should be impacting what we're planning for the rest of it, right? So that we're achieving a a balanced community so that we have the ability for people to move through their life cycle and stay in our city. That I I think that's ultimately the goal, we 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 want to have a great, stable, prosperous. Community that allows those that are starting all the way through, and if if there's gaps there, we need to know about it, we need to identify. And that and that might be a a really inordinate amount of a certain kind of building for the next several years or or what we focus on. To bring the entire thing back in. And so I I just appreciate the process, but. My concern is that we have imbalance in our city, I'd like to see how to get it back into a a more realistic.
And and I think we all agree to it, so, Sherry?
Just one other, just quick comment. Definitions we've talked about.
Say it one more time.
We've talked about definitions. Townhomes historically through most things are defined as single family. And so I think we need to be careful in this, how we define that, because that is attached. And so are we defining single family as detached, or are we defining it as including townhomes which are attached, but still considered single family? So I just think it's important that we.
Absolutely.
That we make sure we define how we want to define.
And the exact process, and it's just like we do with the city planning commission. And the exact process, and it's just like we do with the city planning commission when we give you recommendations. That's what this general plan is with some recommendations. I fully expect you guys, especially, and this was one of the things we talked about. You saw how she broke it down by district. You each are very aware of your districts and the needs and the desires. And if we put it together as a whole, it doesn't reach the district's needs individually very well. And I'm hoping that as Susie continues this process, that you guys are able to see it that way as well and be able to say, okay, yes, this makes sense. This makes sense. Because if you come to, if it comes to us with a developer and there's a zone there and there's a general plan there, that's what we're going to put there. If it comes to us where, where, yeah, the zone doesn't make sense and the general plan, eh, it sort of lets you do what you want with it, then we get what we get. And, and that's, that's really the strength of where you guys are with this general plan right now. Um, we're trying to pull out as much as we can. We believe that there's a huge demand and need to keep the horses and the horse country and let them go up the yellow fork and explore that and still have that option. Do we think that with a little more property, it prices them out of being able to afford it? Yeah, we do a little bit. And that's why the idea of smaller homes, larger lot, different fencing requirements, things like that may make sense. But this is all recommendations. And, and this is stuff that we hope you take back to your districts and get some more input and then make a, a decision on, on how this general plan should, should be put together. Um, I think Heather had a comment.
So my comment is, I, I think that when we were presented this, one of the big points that I thought was made was about affordability and, um, house, the House Bill 34. And when they presented this plan, I thought, okay, this is the density that we have to have to be in compliance with, um, with this new bill. So I don't know if we need to look into that and see if we have to have that certain minimum amount and make sure that we're meeting that. But I agree, I think all of the comments that we received, um, on a lot of those, um, questionnaires, with no more high density, no more high density, everyone is done with the density. So I think when we're looking at this, we do probably need to have a better conversation about, um, about the density and what is required from the state for us.
Brody?
Yeah, can, can we have Susie kind of outline, uh, gross density versus net density? I think that to me helps when we talk about multifamily, using that as a tool for us so that we get better developments when it is high density. And we're not getting, you know, a two foot strip of, of grasses as part of their open space calculations, which have been in the past. Yeah. So I just want to kind of, if she can explain probably better than me, what, what that would mean and how that could work as a tool.
Sure. Freddie, um, so one of the things that we're doing with the future land use categories is to be like much more detailed and descriptive of each of those categories. And so when you hear the term net density, you are thinking about the lot sizes and the final, um, development pattern that people see and perceive. And so when you're walking down the neighborhood and you see a home on a quarter acre lot, to you, you think that's four dwelling units per acre. And so that's the net density. And we want to make sure that we're communicating that, what that final built product is going to look like. Um, and the average target, um, lot size for each of the future land use categories. Uh, the gross density, there's actually two types of gross density. Um, the one is the whole gross density and that's what the future land use, um, map and the general plan has relied on to date. And that is just the entire acreage of a development area. So if it's 100 acres and the, the gross density is two units per acre, you know, you're going to have, um, 200 dwelling units somewhere in that 100 acres. And that includes all of the unbuilt area, all of the roads and infrastructure, uh, but you're going to have 200 units. Another way to think about gross density is gross density on the buildable areas. So minus the infrastructure and minus the unbuildable, um, you know, what is the gross density of the lots? And then any parks or community spaces like schools or churches? You know, that, those are also part of that gross density and, you know, take up some of that acreage. So those are just different ways to think about it. Um, I can bring up an example of sort of the layout of the, the future land use category pages. Um, give me just a second. Okay. Okay. Good, I can share my screen now. Thanks, Jonathan. And, okay. Um, so this is just the way that we are planning to, to lay out, um, the future land use category. Again, you know, one of the things, uh, that's been brought up in our discussions, uh, and Lauren's been key on, on saying is how do we better communicate our vision of what we want to happen and where? Uh, so we're looking to try to make the future land use chapter, um, much more detailed and descriptive and visual. Uh, so you've got your description, um, of what the category is. You've got some visual examples of, you know, development. Um, and, you know, what type of homes you might see, what type of animals you might see, what types of parks in the open space you might see in this, um, type of neighborhood. And then you've got a very detailed description about, you know, why this category is used, where it's used. And then with the development pattern, you've got that max gross density, you know, rather than having a range, you know, what is the max gross density, um, in this category? What is the typical lot size? What do you expect the building form to look like? And if there's outbuildings and whether or not accessory dwelling units, um, would be allowed and if they're detached or detached or attached. Uh, and then just corresponding zones that would match, um, what this category is. Uh, so this is a, an early example, so we're updating that with the, the target lot sizes. Uh, was one of the things that came out of the, the planning commission recommendation, uh, that rather than having any sort of range for that net density, is that we have a target average lot size.
Thanks, Susie.
Sure.
Um, one other item, just, just sort of to bring up here. Because, uh, we talked a little bit about, um, uh, the net density and we look at these developments and then also commercial and leaving the extra commercial that we may or may not use. One of the reasons why we did talk about that also was schools and churches can, can, and can have a huge impact on that. And with the net density, it doesn't change. And, and also with the commercial, if they choose to put a school or church in there, if we have extra plan, we can still meet the needs of what we'd like to accomplish. And I know I hate the idea of just, this is own commercial and we're going to hold on to it for a while, just to hold on to it for a while. But, but with what we've seen consistently over and over and over and over again, um, there is a high percentage of it that will be either have a school or a church that goes into it regardless. And we have to plan accordingly for that.
Exactly, Chris. And I think maybe one of the, the things to note is that, um, the updated categories are going to be useful for, you know, a very small subdivision that might just be an acre or two acres, um, or some of these larger areas that might go under a master development agreement. Uh, the category is going to give you, um, a more specific and clearly communicated expectation of what the finished product is going to be, um, regardless of the size. And it's going to make the tool a little bit more effective for the city to use that way.
All right, thank you, Susie. Any other comments on the general plan?
I'll take just a couple of quick ones, Chris. I think, uh, one piece to think about is the economic development of the community. And, uh, you know, and that's been touched on, that possibly the south gateway, we have some big, we have some opportunities there. And so I think the master plan needs to reflect that, that, uh, you know, we have an opportunity to get some economic drivers into our city as well. So I think that's a big piece of the master plan is to get, you know, some, uh, good direction on what happens around that southeast entrance into the city.
And we look at it as a potentially good area for flex space that we've already seen. And so there may be opportunities for a lot more flex space over there.
And if we can, and if we can make that, uh, commercial space, uh, general business, then there's, you know, more opportunity there that we can, uh, gain from, so.
Any other comments, Jackson?
Uh, no, that was my main one.
Thank you. We don't often get together with the city council, so we talk a little bit more, I think. All right, any other items on this or discussion or comments before we move on to item 1.5? All right, let's move on to item 1.5, which is a discussion pertaining to roof pitch design guideline requirements. And remember, we're doing 1.5, then going back to 1.4. And that's Michael.
Thank you, Chris. And, uh, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the feedback that was just given on the general plan update. Even if you feel like you were sharing comments out of frustration, I want to tell you, I am confident, um, that Susie was happy to hear that. Because I know I was hearing good comments, substantive comments that will, um, help us complete this project. So thank you so much for taking that much time to discuss the general plan updates. And I look forward to having more conversations with the planning commission and the city council on this. Um, and also thank you for letting me suggest that we rearrange our conversation tonight. Obviously, the roof pitch conversation or discussion is one element of the single family, um, home standards uh, that we're going to be discussing next. But I just wanted to maybe have this conversation first, because there's a little bit more information here in this PowerPoint. And then, um, go into our, our overall single family, uh, standards for development. Um, so let's just talk a little bit about roofs in the city. Uh, next slide. Now, if anybody can tell me what is famous about this home, I'm buying you lunch.
Can I speak up, Mike? Should I let everybody else?
What's that?
Can I say anything or does everybody else get to first?
Oh, I, I forget we have an architect on our planning commission. If you're the first one, I'll, I'll take you to lunch.
All right, this is the Grand Bowl home by Green and Green Architects in California, or California, among the world.
That's right, it's in Pasadena. And this was also Doc Brown's house in Back to the Future. So the reason why I put this up here, of course, is that this is a classic, low pitched, uh, craftsman, early craftsman home that was built in Pasadena in 1909. And as you know, we technically, uh, don't allow this type of a roof pitch in the city unless there is some type of an exception that is granted. And that isn't a, a, uh, something that the planning, that, planning commission has the authority to do as a deviation. Or sometimes we specify some different development standards in our NDAs. Um, so, yeah. There are many different roof pitches and we're going to be talking about those tonight and kind of what their purposes are. Next slide. Now, in looking at our current codes, uh, there are a few references to roof pitches that are even outside of our traditional kind of residential neighborhoods. Our commercial and office zones have this reference that just says that buildings in predominantly residential areas, so if we're looking at a commercial or office building in a residential area, it shall have a pitched or gabled roof and use materials that are similar to essentially the surrounding properties. So obviously, this is an intent or an expectation of trying to have, um, kind of compatibility, you know, kind of fitting in, right? Looking like the rest of the neighborhood. It's a common tool that, uh, communities will use in, in trying to integrate maybe potentially a mixture of uses in a community. Um, also in our, um, so in our supplementary and qualifying regulations, we have this, this statement, um, which is the key one. Main building shall be constructed with a minimum of 512 roof pitch. Um, so that is one of the main standards that we often, um, are required to, to follow. And then there's that reference to the deviation, which we'll talk more about. Next slide. Oh, I think maybe we missed one image. Can we actually go back to images? Oh, maybe. Okay, I apologize. Um, this is fine. Uh, so when we, when we talk about roof pitches, they obviously have an impact on the overall design of the building, of course. One of those things might be that you can actually have more usable space in an attic if you have a steeper pitched roof. So you might, um, this is a really common tool in what's called story and a half architecture. If you're trying to kind of maximize, uh, your space, um, this is a, this is a common tool of trying to do that, maybe in a predominantly, uh, uh, single family neighborhood. And you still have a desire to have some attic space that's usable. Um, also to note here, in the past, the city, uh, ordinances measured building height to what would be called the midpoint of the roof. So the graphic on the right, you can see basically where the, um, truss system for the, um, top floor begins. And then you measure up to the top of the ridge. And then the midpoint is where we would actually set the building height. Currently, on our current code, we are now measuring to the ridge line to the top of the roof structure. Um, so just keep that in mind when we talk about building height, we're talking about to the ridge of the roof, at least for, uh, newer projects or projects that, um, aren't tied to our older ordinances.
Is there an advantage to measuring the mid versus the ridge?
Yes, there is.
Answer away. I, I've seen, I've seen both arguments, but was that Jackson who said, yes, there is?
Yeah, I think there is an advantage to, if, if you want to encourage a pitched roof, then you want to measure to the mid height and not the, the peak. Because if, uh, if you're encouraging pitched roofs, then you want to have that, uh, mid height measurement as opposed, because then it really gets high fast, especially on, as the building gets a little larger, if you, uh, uh, have to measure to the ridge.
So, so sorry, if we want to encourage high pitched roofs over low pitched roofs, we should measure to the mid?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it is also a way of trying to, um, maybe have a little bit more uniformity in your overall building height. If you, if you're in a community that is having, um, lots of different styles of roof, you know, if you're using a shed roof or a flat roof structure, um, I've seen communities move to the ridge measurement instead. Um, the county in the past has used the midpoint. Um, but a lot of cities, as they kind of transition away from county rules, have transitioned to the midpoint or to the ridge. At least that's what I've seen. But Jackson has probably worked in more communities than I have, so. Uh, next slide. Go back one.
Yeah, that's encouraging.
Um, so, yeah, do, do the, uh, the snow load. Yeah. So obviously, um, roof construction has an impact on, on snow loads. Engineering, uh, can certainly address this if it's properly anticipated. Um, our, our building codes are rated by, um, our, our zones, like where you are building. And so they have these, um, these standards or these calculations. Obviously, this is an, an older structure that wasn't designed for this much weight. And we do see sometimes in Utah, failure, usually it's these older buildings. But it obviously does have an impact. You have to properly engineer a lower pitched roof as it could potentially, um, have more weight placed upon it. Next slide. Um, the form of the roof is a very defining feature. Um, interesting, if you're, if you're working within a historic district, it's a primary feature that is carefully guarded and, and regulated. Obviously, we think of a, a low pitched or a flat roof as being more contemporary. Um, and if, if, if a community is comfortable with that, um, you know, there's, there's not a concern with it. But what I've traditionally found is that if a community is trying to, you know, maintain that more traditional kind of vernacular, um, obviously, they, they try to discourage lower pitched or flat roofs, more of an aesthetic preference of a community. Next slide. The, the roof pitches, um, obviously, there's all different types. It, it's typically is, uh, measured the, the rise over this, over the span. This image, I, I, I thought I had replaced it, I apologize. This is actually just the reverse. This is the span listed first and then the rise is second. So it goes, uh, 12 inches and it goes up one. You can see 12 over two. You can see 12 over two, 12 over three. I think our ordinance is actually reversed that when we say 512, we mean that the, that the rise is five inches and it spans 12 inches. Next slide. And there's obviously lots of different roof types. One of the challenges that we have in Harriman is many of our builders are combining roof types on a home. This, this little diagram is, is showing obviously lots of roof types, many of them. Maybe we don't see here in Harriman, a butterfly roof. I don't know when is the last time I've seen a building with a butterfly roof. But how do we apply our minimum roof pitch when you maybe have a gabled roof? But then there's a little portion that is a, a shed roof that isn't 512. So we do have some complexity there if you are combining roof types on a structure. Next slide. And so we just talked about maybe what are some of the options? Do we want to maintain, you know, our current regulations? Allow the planning commission to grant exceptions? Do we possibly want to remove our minimum roof pitch and just rely on building code? I think I made a note in my staff report that the building code says anything that is less than, or 212 or less than that is basically considered to be a flat roof. Even a flat roof will have some slope. Obviously, it needs to drain the water. There's got to be some slope even on a flat roof. When you're, the, the steepness or the pitch of the roof will certainly have an impact on materials. So some materials are not appropriate for a lower pitched roof. Another thing that was interesting in my research is that a steeper pitched roof, because it sheds the water much quicker, they actually tend to require less maintenance over time. However, they can be, from a construction perspective, they can be a little bit harder to build. In that, obviously, you can't walk, you know, easily on a very steep, steep or pitched roof. So you'd have to be, you know, have to use a little bit more safety gear in constructing a steeper pitched roof.
Michael, just to clarify, what is our current minimum and maximum?
I'm sorry, say that again?
What's the current code is?
And maximum?
So there, there is no maximum. It's all, that would be building code. But our minimum for, for basically our single family is 512. That's the standard that we typically are, you know, a developer will say, can I modify that? Can I reduce that is the 512 standard? Um, I think I included in your packet that our medium density design standards, I think actually has a 612 standard in that design guideline. So there's, there's some variety in the city, but the 512 is the big one that we often have discussions with or have a developer ask for an exception for.
Hey, Michael, this is Adam. Back in the days, didn't they, before the modern architecture and things like that and the big discussion, wasn't a big proponent of tying things to 512 to get away from manufacturer homes and things like that?
So that has also been something where, you know, your typical when, when you're talking about what constitutes a single family home, it is possible for someone to purchase a, a pre manufactured home, put it on a permanent foundation and then essentially say, well, that's my single family home. So some communities would say, in order to avoid that, we are going to have a minimum square footage requirement, we're going to have a minimum pitch, roof pitch requirement, you know, material requirement. So that was one tool in order to avoid having just a, essentially a pre, you know, mobile home put onto a permanent foundation and then claim that that's not a mobile home any longer because it's on a fixed foundation.
Couldn't we just say no manufactured home and, and allow that creativity? If that's really what everybody's intent typically is with the 512?
We, we can and, and inevitably, there's not, as far as I know, I, I haven't seen a lot of manufactured pre manufactured product coming into our market. But of course, we're, we're, we're seeing it maybe in coastal communities. And there are a lot of pre manufactured units these days that are not just your typical mobile home essentially. They're, they're more like you know, individual units that can be, that can be, you know, put together to, to form a larger structure. Even in commercial construction, you can have a, a prefabricated, you know, unit and assembled. I don't know if our, our resident architect has any comments and like I said, I've been trying to follow that conversation here in Utah. And it doesn't seem like we're having
I'll jump in briefly.
Far away from the coast to see much of that so far. But yeah, please, Jackson.
Uh, pre manu, I'll say prefabricated homes is probably where you're headed. A lot of the prefabricated, I think you see more in multifamily. We're actually, our firm is designing some 12 story hotels in, on the Bay area using prefabrication. So it works well when you're repeating a lot of that same size. And there's a lot of manufacturers in California, a couple in Idaho even, that are starting to look at a, a single family detached as a way to do that. But they could, a lot of them are savvy enough that they could meet whatever codes that we require. Uh, one, one sec. A lot of them do tend to be flat roof, especially in California, more because they're looking to have that modern style. So it does help with the prefab to go with flat roof, but not necessarily.
My only intent in bringing that up was I, I actually believe this is an old code to try and prohibit the standard. Ship it in on two trucks, on, put it on a foundation and put a seam up the center. That, that's what I think the reason why this was in here, why it copied over. I don't believe there was any interest other than to protect that. And I agree, they've changed a, a lot of just the standard construction has prohibited people from going to that older style that came out in the eighties.
Yeah, for, for me, my comment, Brody here, the pitch of the roof. I mean, we, I think it should be addressed by building code and structurally, if it's sound, then it should be permitted. My, I guess my thoughts are being able to not allow for poorer standards, like where, where the, the builder is building that way because it's cheaper because they're trying to make a inferior product. So just putting more, I guess, emphasis on making sure it's structurally sound. But to me, the ones that we've seen where they have a lower pitch, just the architectural elements, elements of that makes sense. But it's just, we've had to have them be a conditional permit because of how it's written.
And Michael, I mean, right now, we have it to where we can make an exception at any time if they bring it to us and we view it as of equal or greater quality, right?
Right, essentially, what I think we've been looking at is the lower pitched roof, is it complementing the overall architecture? Is there something that is exceptional in the design? Obviously, like the historic home that I showed you in the beginning, there's an exceptional quality to that. And so we have allowed that. But maybe if the lower pitched roof is not really complimenting or maybe accenting the overall architecture, maybe that would give the planning commission pause, you know, in granting that exception.
So I agree with what Brody was saying, that I actually think it'd be fine to go rely on the building code. The only concern I have is the, the times when the minimum pitch has an issue that I've seen is when you're mixing different types of product and it just doesn't give a cohesive neighborhood feel. It becomes almost out of place. And that's what I've noticed. I've seen some of that up on the draper, the draper bench. If you go up where the parachute and paraglide all the time, if you go through that neighborhood, you can see the ones that just don't really fit in to the community. And I think it almost creates a little bit of an eyesore where if there was more of that same style, I think incorporates a little bit of a blended community. And so I don't know how to tie that to code.
Well, I would say that my, my, if I can jump in with my opinion, I, I think I, I like this, the 512, I would even go suggest going to 612 personally. But then I would say if we had exceptions or allowed exceptions, where they give additional architectural features that weren't going to a lower pitch. Say, for example, if you wanted to double the amount of required glass or double the amount of brick and stone, you know, maybe there's a reason to go with that different look.
And I like what Jackson's saying on expand what we allow, but then further exceptions need to come through the planning commission to approve. Because I think there are some ability to expand what we currently have and still have great options.
Well, and one thing I, one, one idea I can give you of, and I, you know, was back when the, the one guy wanted to do that, the domed building that wouldn't really fit in the neighborhood. I don't know if that ever paid to the city council, but that one was yeah, that one was fairly interesting and what, I think what saved, that in the long term saved him a lot of money, but as well as saved the community was that we required a pitched roof.
Yeah, if, if I may suggest, so we can come back to this overall question. I just had a little bit more information in this roof pitch presentation. But this will also appear in the next discussion. So if it would be okay, because we can still talk about this, why don't we go ahead and jump to 1.4? And then we'll cover this again and if, if anybody else wants to talk about roof pitch and their recommendations.
Let's move on to 1.4, Michael. That's you as well, it looks like.
Yes. We'll bring up that presentation.
I do, I do have one last blurb as you bring that up, Michael.
Sure.
I had one of my professors had a quote that's always kind of stuck with me is, you can tell how nice a neighborhood is by how steep the pitch of the roof is.
Yeah, and, and there's, I mean, I recognize that there are some current trends that are quite popular that the steeper pitched roofs are not maybe as, you know, preferable for some, for some builders and some buyers. Yeah, but if you're in, if you're really into encouraging the traditional form, obviously, the pitched roof is, is a key architectural element. Okay.
Hey, Michael, can I, can I just interject? Can I just interject too, just because I, I did ask for this to be on here because I was approached by a builder asking this and, and he sent me several pictures of different homes he's, he's built throughout our community. And I just felt to see how they detract from the beauty of our community. I think they add some variety. I don't like driving down the road and seeing all the same pitched roofs on a house and things like that. I think a variety in our neighborhoods is good. I also believe that there are very, very few places. There are very, very few places in our, in our city that you're going to be able to even think about putting a dome house because almost all of the development that goes on is part of a subdivision. They have to go through CC and, most of them are in CCNRs and things like that. So I think that you, they, I just don't think it's that much of an issue. I think his point was if he comes in with some nice houses, then it's just an extra, more steps to have to go back through planning commission to get different things. So anyway, I, I'm just supportive of some more variety.
Yeah.
I think his, his designs were, were well thought out. They, they, they look nice.
Hey, Sherry, what were, do you remember specifically those ones that he showed you? Did he actually tell you what the pitch was in contrast to what's in our current ordinance?
Yeah, they're 312.
312.
Mm-hmm. And I can, I can email the pictures and you can put them on the screen at some point if you want, but but I think they're nice, they, they look good and I just don't think that they are detracting. They weren't like some gravel, flat top roof, you know?
Right, right.
And, and I would, and I wouldn't disagree. I think where Michael showed the Gamberl House there at the beginning, that's a fantastic house. And I think, but I do think that if we have the pitch, then it gives us a gamble or something to, to add, you know, if, if they want to go with the lesser pitch, it gives us an opportunity to ask for something nicer somewhere else. Which means keep the nice, because there's, it's easy to go real cheap, real quick with the flatter roof.
Okay, for this next discussion, just the next slide. When I first came to Harriman, I Googled Harriman, Utah. And I was really amazed at the images that I would see in an image search. And I did not know about the up house before coming to Harriman. And initially, I would see the up house, here it's three times in this Google shirt, search. Sometimes I see four or five. But I do this periodically because I want to see what are the images, what are the most prevalent images that come up in a Google search when you're asking it to say Harriman, Utah. What do you see? And repeatedly, it's homes and neighborhoods. So, so clearly, the architecture of our homes are really a defining element of our community, of our character. We, we all kind of know that, but I always find it interesting that this exercise just continually communicates that. Also, of course, views are, are key and are open space. On your tables, I provided tonight a little packet. This is something that you're welcome to take. It's kind of food for thought. You'll notice that the packet was paid for or published by James Hardy, which is the manufacturer of a cement fibrous board, hardy board that is commonly used on buildings. And obviously, they're making an argument that homes don't need to be made from brick or stucco. But even though there is that interest behind that little material, they, the, the author is quite credible. As an architect, she just put, boiled down some really basic design ideas. And that is just something that if we want to continue this conversation, you may want to just read through that. Not saying every idea in there is perfect or great for Harriman, but I think it might help you start thinking about what constitutes design, residential design and what do I think would fit or work here in Harriman? What's a good idea that maybe we could actually add to our, our regulations if we wanted to? So take those if you want. If you're not interested in reading that, leave it in the room. I periodically hand those out to, to builders and different people. So we will definitely use them. So, next slide. So reviewing our, our standards, what do we hope to achieve? You know, what are the things that we're wanting to maybe talk about in this conversation? Is it reducing construction costs? I, I, I've been hearing that maybe we want to find ways to incentivize single family home construction over maybe town home or a multifamily. Are we looking at ways to maybe improve design or is it something else? Is there, is there another objective that maybe we're trying to achieve in having this conversation?
I have a question for you.
Sure.
When you ask reduce construction cost, my, my immediate question is that, does that really reduce the cost of the homes right now? Because if answers no, then it makes it difficult for me to be really interested.
I mean, obviously, mason, well, Jackson, again, I apologize for leaning on you. I mean, I, I would presume that a masonry material tends to be a more expensive type of fascia, right? And if there's more of it, your home probably costs more money. So if there's less of it, now maybe you're trading that off for something else, maybe another building material that might be as expensive. But in general, there's a good reason why we're not seeing all of our town homes made out of completely brick. Because there are other materials that are just quite frankly cheaper. Stucco, you know, or other systems, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so if we, if we, you know, change some of our standards and primarily it's the masonry standard that we usually hear about, it is a potential of reducing construct costs. And, and maybe there are other reasons that will come up during the course of our conversation. So, next slide. I thought it was also important that we remember that while we often talk about individual rights, which are clearly important, they are a primary, right, protection of individual rights or in this case, maybe property rights. But there's also the need to balance the community values, the community interests and the impacts. That we as individuals have on our neighbors and on our community. So our regulations really are seeking to balance and protect both of those. If you read our purpose statement in the, our land use development code. You know, it's talking about some more of those community oriented objectives, you know, what are we trying to, to accomplish? In doing land use regulations, we're trying to protect health, safety, promote prosperity and peace. We're concerned about our tax base, you know, how, how development impacts our taxes in the city. You know, our efficiency as a government as far as expenditures. And, you know, protecting um our environment uh and property values. Uh, next slides. So what I've done is I've just picked out essentially each standard. And, and we'll just go through each one on these different screens. And just asking, do we think that this standard, this particular statement needs to change? And if so, does anybody have any suggestions, anything that you want staff to research or look at? Um, we're not, we don't need to dial in on all the answers tonight. I think the main thing we're trying to figure out is. What direction do we want to go? I think there's interest. We've heard the planning commission has been talking about this as well. Um, I think this was uh on the agenda specifically because one of our council members had requested it. So I think we have a desire to make changes, but what direction do we want to go with making those changes? So is there anything here about this particular statement that anybody has concerns with? Okay, does it sound like there is? And, and, and it's not like forever holds your peace. We can always talk about this later, but let's move on to the next slide.
So Michael, sorry, I, I'm just going to go back because it kind of goes back to what I said earlier on the, on the um master plan. This does, like townhomes, I don't know if, if those are all single family attached or detached. Yeah, I guess it's fine. Because it lists both attached and detached.
Yes. Yeah, so our standards apply to both attached and detached dwellings. That's how the strike, how it's currently written.
Okay.
Yeah. Next slide. So exterior materials, um, what is allowed? And then again, the key phrase is right kind of in the middle there, a minimum of forty percent of the front exterior. And any side or rear viewable from the street shall be brick or stone. Now, how that's been interpreted and applied in the past, and I just want to uh qualify this. This is applied to the um essentially the face of the building. And not to the openings, meaning we're going to deduct all the windows from the calculation. And we're also deducting any doors, including the garage door. So once you deduct the openings, it's just the wall membrane itself. That we're looking at the forty percent material. So oftentimes when you're driving by a, a neighborhood, you're driving by a home, you might stop and ask yourself. Now that doesn't really look like forty percent brick to me. Well, the reason for that is we've, we're, we're, we've already deducted the windows and the garage door. So it's just what's left after that. One of the reasons for that is there was uh, uh, an interpretation or, or a, a policy. That we didn't want to discourage the placement of windows. If a, uh, if a architect or a builder or somebody wanted to have a wall that had a lot of glass and a lot of windows. Um, most communities actually like that. They like having, you know, large picture windows or more window details. Um, so the idea was we don't want to penalize that form of design or that element of design. So it was, the forty percent was just being applied to what is left over. Now, if for any reason, we need to change that interpretation or that application of that policy. That's something that we can also talk about, but I just wanted to be clear that it's the forty percent of the wall. Um, element itself and not the entire elevation uh combined. Um, any questions about this standard and, and this of course is, I think, a big topic that you may uh want to give some direction on?
This is Brody. Um, when it says any side that's rear viewable from the street. I mean, typically we just see it wrap around two feet. And then you see stucco around the other sides of most homes. So I, to me that needs, I don't know, it seems pretty clear to me, any side viewable, rear viewable. From the street would mean three of the four sides in most cases. And then, because we don't really, we don't really say uh up to the point where you put a fence because there's no fence there.
That is a good point. And again, I think this comes back to the interpretation or the application of the regulations. Um, if it's a corner home, clearly that side is visible from the um corner street. Or if it's a property that has a double frontage lot, we typically try to avoid those. We, we try to not have. A street on the front and then another street on the rear. Um, most communities see that as, as being undesirable for just a traditional uh kind of suburban subdivision. So i- 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 in that case, we would get, you know, architecture on both front and back or front and corner. But uh I agree with you, Brody, you know, might we be changing our standards and say? If it's really is visible from the street. Should the standards apply even if it's not a corner side yard? But that's how it's been interpreted in the past.
Oh, I, I know that doesn't make, it doesn't make it cheaper to build. Um, the other piece of it I would look at is. When we say forty percent brick or stone to maybe add other materials to that list.
Yeah, a couple of comments that'll, that really tie into, to what Brody just said. For me, um, I've actually had a. Kind of an issue with, you know, what that forty, how that forty percent is really um. Calculated for a long time, knowing, and it, and I don't disagree with taking out the windows and doors, but then when you're left with very little, it's very easy sometimes and it. To meet that forty percent and you're really not given anything substantial with it. So honestly, for me, uh, I think when it comes to the, the actual forty percent, I think that you either need to go. Higher or get rid of it altogether. Because I think that again, the way it's calculated, that forty percent, you, you're not gaining any really real value or real. Um, texture to the front of the home when it's calculated that way. And I think that there's a lot of, to Brody's point, I think that there's other materials that can add a lot of texture and I think that's really kind of what we're looking for here. Is acceptable materials that provide kind of depth and texture to, to a residence. And I think that there, I think that. We're seeing that there's a lot of different ways uh now to do that. Um, not that I disagree, I, I love brick and stone, but again, I don't think that that is the only way to do that. Um, secondarily to that, you know. I would, I think it might be better for us to, you know, where it talks about vinyl and wood siding are not permitted. Let's actually strike that and just say what is expected on the outside and not what is not permitted. Hence to Brody's comment of what those materials or the like are that we, that we want to see.
Are you suggesting that we don't have a list of prohibited materials, that we allow vinyl? If that's what they want to use?
No, I'm not saying that, that they, that we allow. What I'm saying is, is that we list. Pretty, pretty plainly what are the acceptable materials to use, whether that be brick, stone, stucco. Um, you know, cement, the hardy board or the like.
So, so maybe we should separate what are the prohibited materials, maybe in a different paragraph or a subparagraph.
Eh, eh, I will say. Based off of something Clint said there where he talked about um actually uh increasing the amount. Um, potentially based off of how it looks because of how it's calculated. My thought immediately went to and eh, and granted that it's just my opinion on this one. Is increasing the amount on attached homes and making it a standard. To where that does encourage that single family homes have a, a different standard that is not quite as expensive even. To where maybe we require it on the front and all sides of all attached homes. Um, I, and, and I just look at it from the perspective of I'd rather go the other direction of making um. It, it more expensive to build townhomes, but not decreasing our standard for unattached homes, so.
Chris, you, you hit it right on the nose. This is something that I remember I, I had that exact comment. I made that to. The city when we changed this particular requirement years ago, um, and I was just a resident. Uh, I very much made agreement with Clint, but very specifically in the way that we should increase that percentage. Uh, we should, I feel it should be increased for single family hall, uh detached homes. But I also feel very strongly that uh we should make that same change for attached housing in all forms. Uh, we should very clearly say that if somebody wants to build an apartment, they need to do a, you know, ninety to a hundred percent brick or stone. And if they want to do townhomes, they need to do ninety to a hundred percent brick and stone. Because if we set that, in- increase that standard on those. Eh, eh, one, either one gives us a better product that we're getting in those attached housing for those residents. Or two, it, it takes away some of the incentive to build attached housing when they could be building detached, single family homes. And so in my opinion, across the board, we need to raise these, these numbers uh and these percentages for what should be brick and stone. On, on, on these homes. And I also agree that I don't necessarily think the way we're interpreting. Viewed from the street is correct. There's lots of properties that we can drive around. That we see that we can easily see the side of the home. And so. Even though it might not be a corner lot, I would like to see that also applied to the sides. Yes, I understand that. Requiring more brick and stone is going to increase the construction costs. But I don't necessarily think right now, construction cro- costs are what driving housing costs. I think there's a disconnect there uh that, that uh, you know, is not going to be hurt by us requiring more brick and stone. Look at Park City. When you go to Park City, all you see is stone and people love it. And so that's kind of, that's my opinion. A- as I look at this and I want to see those changes made moving forward.
Sheri?
Um, I just thought, I think when we were considering this, Michael gave us these really nice handouts. If y'all go to page thirty-five on here, I think that that's beautiful home on the bottom right corner. And this is not allowed to be built in our city. And so I just think that we have to be very careful where, where dictating um brick or stone, because there are some other. Other building materials that can look quite nice. Eh, eh, we, it's not, it's not, we're just not flapping up a piece of wood and throwing some paint on it. There are some good quality building materials that can look very nice. And I think that again. We take away the opportunity to have a good variety of different styles and types of homes in our community. If all we say is brick and, brick and stone.
So, so the one thing that, and I, and this is a huge question, but do, does the city staff? Uh, talk about with builders that come to them with unique products like, like this, for instance, in the bottom right? And say, there is opportunities to make exceptions, or do they just turn around and say, we're not doing it?
Oh, no, no. We, we, we definitely will explain that there is an opportunity to appear before the planning commission and ask for an exception. You know, it's specifically identified as a, as a deviation. So yeah, they know that that's an opportunity, but like Sheri said, uh, it is an extra step. They have to wait for that meeting, they have to make an application. Um, it's a pretty simple application. I mean, it's not a difficult thing to do. They've already have the design, they already have the information to provide to the city, but it is a step that they need to go through.
And when you, when you see these, Michael, are they really singles? Like there's one home here, one home there, or is it? An actual builder that comes in and wants to do a neighborhood like this?
Well, um, there was one that we denied or the planning commission denied not too long ago, and that particular builder. I, I think was, was hopeful that they could do more of the modern farmhouse. Which so many of those have maybe little or no brick or stone on them, you may recall.
I, I do, I remember exactly. Uh, they showed us three awesome townhouses or, or farmhouse styles. And then they showed us a house that looked exactly like one in another neighborhood, just with hardy board on the bottom or where the brick was usually.
Right.
And it wasn't the same product. And so, so I mean, if that's the type of deviations that builders are hoping for. I don't think that's what we want.
Yeah, so I actually failed to, to make a mention of something and maybe another approach. I mentioned this to Heather, she walked, was walking in and I was leaving those, those pack, those packets on your tables. Maybe another idea is what if you, we hold a certain standard? Maybe some even suggested that we increase some of these standards. But then we have maybe um another, like, almost like if you want to deviate from this. We're going to spell out what those design standards are and almost, almost have like a higher level of design. Uh, in order to get out of this, this exterior material requirement. It's almost like we have an alternate track. But in going over to that alternate track, we're going to be more careful at specifying. What Harriman believes constitutes good design.
So, so Mike, Michael, over the last.
Yeah.
And, and Adam might be able to help me with this as well. Over the last, let's say about year. I remember two homes that have came in that wanted deviations. The one that you mentioned just recently. That wanted a farmhouse style house, but then showed us three excellent products and then brought in something that looked exactly like what we've seen. Except for they took the brick off. And then I remember a little while back, we had someone that came in. They had different pitch on the roof, they had uh superior product on their garage doors, they had superior windows. They had a whole different design and we approved it.
Right.
And, and so those, that is, that's, that's about the extent of what we're seeing. If we're hearing from the, the council that they see a bunch of other builders come in with stuff. That the, I, I, I hate saying this, but. I don't like the bait, a bait and switch that's occurring, to where they show an awesome product. And then when they come to us, it's, this is a farm style house. And it's like, no, it's not compared to what you showed us. And, and that's where I worry about just opening up this ability for them to do what they want. Because yes, we want to be trusting and we want it to occur, but we've been burned a lot.
So I, Chris, I agree with what you're saying. Um, so I've thought about this a lot because I remember when Clint and, and all of us started and we changed it from up to forty. I remember that because we were trying to avoid the, the filled stone, put a liner around your garage door, uh, a couple of rows of brick. I mean, that, that's what the original discussion was. And so. I, I, I think when we've made this rule, I think we kind of focused on the wrong thing, like I, I, I appreciate when we talked about that we should exclude doors and windows. But if you're counting the garage door as a majority piece of that opening, then obviously. That's going to be a very small reduction in the percentage. Just, I mean, if we just said, hey, don't count garage door. Instantly that percentage of uh brick and stone is going to skyrocket by just saying that one word uh and one exclusion, but. But I was thinking about this a little bit and I've been going over it. I actually kind of with Clint, I think we, I personally think we should almost drop the percentages. And tie it to architectural design elements and trying to make it look cohesive. Like I personally would rather see no brick and stone and have the building wrapped in the same look around the entire, around the entire. House. And that's what's cool about farmhouses is it's, it's a style all the way around. It doesn't stop at the edge. Unless they do a crappy job. And that's the part I think we should tie to more, more than I think tie into a product. Because products are going to change. I mean, vinyl in the nineties was huge and it dropped. And I get that it changes and I get that it should change. I personally don't know why we should tie it to, I, I think we should tie to architectural elements and trying to put in the stuff that. Uh, guys like uh Jackson and, and Mike went to school for. The architectural elements that are there to make a good building, put that in here versus tying it into any of the permitted styles.
Thank you, Adam. Eh, eh, Sheri, just sort of going with this, um, I will tell you the planning commission is itching for somebody to come with a product. That, that is a good product. I mean, they really want to prove it. That's the funny part. Um, but we haven't seen anything.
I think we, we had the one that was good, Chris.
What, Jackson?
Like you said, the one we approved was good and I, I would, I wouldn't mind seeing more of that.
Yeah, and, and that was something if everybody remembers, they actually wrapped it around the entire house. Everything was, it was that cohesive. Architecture. It wasn't just the face of the building.
Eh, eh, Jackson can describe or Adam the roof. I mean, it was a different pitch, but it also went off what. And and Jackson can describe or Adam, the roof. I mean, it was a different pitch, but it also went off what, what another.
Four more feet or something.
Was, it was very similar to the house that Michael showed at the beginning with the overhangs.
Yeah, I, I forwarded those pictures to Jonathan and he can show them to you in a minute of those, of those homes. And I, I'm sure those have been built here in Harriman. And I don't, I don't sit in your guys' seat. I don't know how, you know, how many of those you have come. My concern, and it might be an invalid concern, is that I wonder if people know, okay, well, this is their requirement. So they're not bringing things to us because they already know the requirements, you know? Does it stifle, stifle, stifle imagination? Does it stifle those requests because they just know those are our standards? Or, or is it not? I don't know what the answer is.
I, I, I totally understand they do, because you think of home builders, uh, my neighborhood, Fieldstone. They get so many that are approved, and that's all they show you. Here are your options. You have five houses to choose from that we have approved with the city. And they really don't want to have to go back to the city and get a variance or.
But I think a lot of that comes with, we don't have custom builders as much. When it's the, when it's the, the builders that have only a handful of products, that's what they're gonna get. If we get custom builders that come in, it's a very different ballgame.
But the other thing, uh, Sherry, to, to answer what you're saying, what, what it puts us into with the way we currently are structured, which is why I would prefer to tie it to the architecture itself, is it almost becomes a heartstring discussion where you have one person saying, well, you know, this is my dream home and I'm building it with my own personal money versus a builder that's trying to describe it. I personally think we should tie it to the architecture so we can remove ourselves from that type of, of issue that we get stuck in all the time. And if I try enough, I'm gonna make you want me to build it. And that's the thing that I, everybody knows that's worked with me long enough is I don't listen to any of that crap.
No, I li- I like that a lot. He's just looking through these pictures, flip a couple more, yeah. These are all things that have been built here. I like the left one. I, I think that's a cool looking house. And it's like, there's nothing wrong with that. The roof pitches are, don't, they would have to come in for a variance on those kind of things.
Yeah. To, to me, and and maybe Michael could tell me if I'm wrong, but it looks like the only variance is really the roof pitch, because they all have brick and stone on them.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Because that's the only variance they asked for, because they knew your ordinance required those, that brick and stone. So that's the concern is that I like the architectural idea, because I just don't like tying it to just brick and stone.
And I agree with what you're saying, because I'll be honest, I'm going to pick the two that you first sent, the first two pictures, if you look at those two. The other two, I think, are awesome, but these ones are barely tie, barely tying into the brick and stone. And I actually think it makes it look like it doesn't fit in by lead to lack.
One on the top, one on the bottom.
The other two, I think, are great. The, but I think if we tie to architectural elements, and I'll let, uh, Jackson expl- maybe, maybe I'm wrong. But the first two don't, it doesn't look like they have an architectural theme. It looks like they're trying to slab a bunch of stuff together. The other two, the last two, I'm looking at two, that one and the next one. Those look like they've tried to stay cohesive to the architecture of the building. And I would love to see what it looked like on the sides, but the top two look like they just slapped a couple different architectures together.
No, I, I agree.
I'll endorse that, Adam.
Again, not an architect, so I gotta rely on you, Jackson.
If you, if you look through that booklet, uh, you know, you could read that in an hour or less, you'll, you'll, you'll pick out some of the things that, Adam, you were just talking about. One of the very first statements that are in that booklet is we often just, based on instinct, recognize what is good design and maybe what is not quite right, what is not working. Um, that booklet is just really trying to give you the language, the tools to be able to talk about it, maybe just spark ideas. Okay, so what I'm hearing so far is that maybe we want to change our standards, have one set of standards for single family and another set of standards for multifamily.
Yes.
And maybe we could introduce something that would guide more design. And maybe the percent of, of masonry is still debatable. But maybe if we craft something that starts to address those issues, we can discuss another time about whether or not it's appropriate to increase or reduce or remove the masonry requirement. Would that work for everybody if we were to move forward? I mean, move on to the next topic or, uh, the next standard?
Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to capture. Just where it says, and any side, I just don't feel like we enforce that at all.
I, I, I mean, and and the mayor said it, and I've said it, but I mean, I really believe the standard for the townhomes needs to go drastically. And I look at, I mean, some of the areas I've been in where there are attached housing, um, how it deteriorates. And then the attached housing that lasts and looks really good for a long time. To be perfectly honest, it's the ones that have brick or stone on the majority of it. It just is what it is.
Right.
And so, man, especially when it's more of a transit type unit, unfortunately. There's just, you might have over thirty year span. You might have eight or nine people that come in and out of it versus one or two.
Right.
And so, increasing the standard for the tasks, I think, is something that would be very useful.
Okay. Next slide. So planning commission has an opportunity to review, uh, building colors and materials. Um, it's part of our subdivision and site design review. We obviously have a garage standard. Um, and and parking, our minimum, um, length of a, of a driveway. Any concerns with these standards? Okay.
What's the, what's the length of the? Some of the trucks we have now, I think that driveway is just a teeny bit small. But, but it's just something that I think we need to possibly look at.
Yeah, you do have some trucks that'll stretch over that twenty-four feet even.
Tw- twenty-four feet remind me is the state length of a standard F-150, correct? Or fifteen hundred? Is that why we went with that length?
Yeah. What I've noticed is we have a lot of those bigger trucks that we try and squeeze in and what happened.
If you have the full bed, it's gonna stretch over. If you have the short bed, which is a six foot, it'll be okay.
So, so on this one with the, with the driveway length, so I have a couple of concerns. One, I know that in Rosecrest Village, for example, there is a road that I've personally seen with my own two eyes, where they had a medical emergency on that street. The fire truck pulled in, the ambulance pulled in behind it. Then another fire truck pulled in. They got the individual loaded into the ambulance and they couldn't get the ambulance out because the driveways were too short. And so, and they're, because of the big trucks that were parked basically out into the street, because there was no sidewalk. Uh, there was no ability for the ambulance to get out without the fire truck leaving first. And that, to me, concerns me, that we would ever put our residents in that kind of a situation. So for me, I don't know if twenty-four feet is wrong, but twenty-four feet to the street is too short. I'm fine with twenty-four feet if that's to the sidewalk. But if there's no sidewalk and that goes straight to the feet, uh, to the street, that is going to cause problems. I can see that, foresee that causing problems in other locations versus what we're already dealing with now. So in the event that we are looking at twenty-four feet as a minimum, I would say twenty-four feet to a sidewalk is fine. I would say that, uh, if that's straight to the street, we need to extend that. Uh, I also think that twenty-two feet wide is about two feet too short. And that we should extend that to twenty-four feet wide as well.
And and I look at it, um, I just looked up some numbers. So it looks like, uh, a standard F-150 with the cab on it. Um, it's about twenty feet. And then if you do the, the longer bed, it's twenty-one and a half feet. So I think twenty-four feet long is fine. I remember we changed this. It used to be eighteen feet, and then we changed it to twenty-four. So when you see these trucks hanging over, it's those old driveways of eighteen feet, I believe. Yeah, so I believe it's the, the old requirement. The new requirement requires this, which I think we're okay with.
Yeah, we changed, uh, we changed the length of the driveway, but, uh, a while ago, but I think the, and maybe even the garage, but the garage, based on what you just said. You get anything over, you're gonna run out of room in a garage really quick, which is gonna push those vehicles out into the driveway. And I think that's what we're really trying to avoid. So we're trying to make a garage space that they can actually park, which then leaves the driveway space for the visitors to be able to park. And that is a lot of time stop.
So, so Clint, you remember the meeting where, uh, where, um, Adam asked him to put the, the garbage cans in the garage with the, the vehicle and they wouldn't fit?
Yep.
So.
And some of our HOAs actually require that, that the trash cans go in the garage.
Correct.
The other, the other issue that we.
The other thing, Mary, I think we need to talk about is you were talking more about a private road that is not a city road. And that would be more in the multifamily standard discussion or the, 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 um, multi-attached home discussion that I think we do need to address, which is a bigger problem than necessarily probably a standard city-owned road.
You might, you might be making a fair point there. I will say, though, on the garages, and this applies on both single family, detached, and multifamily. One of the things we forget about when we're looking at the garage size is we're expecting a pad that is twenty-four feet by twenty, by twenty-two feet, or whatever this standard is. The grading in Harriman, especially up at District Four on the benches, almost always that driveway is used to eat up some of that elevation change. And so there is almost guaranteed to be two to five steps in that garage. And so that almost always comes out three to four feet into the garage and almost always right somewhere in the center of the garage. So we're losing several feet of usable parking space in those garages. So I don't know if, I don't know if we change our, our code for that specifically, but that is something that we, as we're considering that distance, we need to consider, because the vast majority of things being built up on that, on the mountain right now, struggle with that particular issue.
So, so Michael, um, a way to maybe rephrase this, if there's something to look at, is, uh, twenty-four feet from the back of the garage or the back of the, the start of the steps in the back of the garage.
Or just tie it to usable parking area of the garage. Maybe we do, maybe we reduce it from twenty-four by twenty-two. I don't remember the truck sizes, because that was a long time ago. Uh, but.
It's gonna be twenty feet or twenty, twenty-one and a half, pretty much.
I think that's a good comment. Yeah, we can specify that.
Keeping in mind that you need two feet on either side to walk around the vehicle. I mean, we can't just put a twenty-four foot truck in, or twenty-two foot truck in and have twenty-two feet and not give them a, a way to get around that vehicle.
So we'd have to let the houses be bigger then.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'd have to build them on larger lots, I guess.
Okay, next slide. Uh, minimum floor area, uh, twenty-four hundred square feet. Here's the roof pitch, five twelve. And then building elevations, this is just talking about having variety in our mass production or, or, you know, our builders, just making sure that they are changing the, the elevations. Any concerns here? Do we want to?
This is all the attached, is this single family unattached again? Just remind me.
This is all, single family, detached.
So, so the question I have, and this was brought up in the general plan a little bit, we were talking about potentially smaller homes, um, on larger lots for horse, in horse country and things like that. We, would we have to rewrite for the specific zone, uh, a different criteria for single family housing? Or how would that work, Michael?
Well, right now, this is, these are general standards that would apply citywide essentially. Um, so again, if you wanted to write an exception, maybe for a particular zone, that's a possibility. Um, yeah, that, so that could be done.
So I, I think if anything, we should tie this twenty-four hundred square feet to the multifamily attached homes. And if we're going to even have a minimum for a single family residential, I think we should drop it drastically.
I do too. Isn't there, doesn't the state have a set minimum requirement for single family detached homes?
I do not know that, but I'll be honest, if I could pull everybody, and I know we're all here, I bet you most of us grew up in homes smaller than that.
Way smaller. Yep, way smaller. I think, I hate that ordinance, actually.
So, so sorry.
I do think we should tie it to twenty-four hundred square feet for multifamily attached to try and drive away from the fact that we want to go, we want to try and get them to go single family.
Now, isn't twenty, is this twenty-four hundred feet basement?
So again, it says finished and unfinished. So it's, it's the total floor area.
So upstairs and downstairs?
Yes, yeah, all together.
And, oh, and and Adam, just addressing maybe the mayor's question of, of why we're looking at potentially dropping it, it's, it's giving, it's giving individuals a yard. And to where maybe they have a little smaller home, uh, but then they have more of a yard concept, so.
Well, like the one we saw last week where the window well was right up to the property line and you couldn't even go across, you had to walk across the window well to get to the backyard. It's so that we could shrink the houses a little bit and at least maybe give people a little bit more yard or allow more options.
Yeah, I.
So, would, as we, as we look at that, and and I'm not necessarily opposed, I'm just trying to understand the, the thoughts and theory behind that. Uh, a- as we do that, would there be, you know, are we, are we caring so much about the overall footage? Are we just caring about the, the actual finished footage? So if, if the question is, you know, are we gonna drop it? Do we want to drop it and set it separate for finished versus unfinished? Because what I could see happening is we finish a very small portion. You know, we might have a two thousand square foot, a house with a thousand finished square feet, which might be fine for someone, but where's that threshold? I, I'm not saying that I know an answer. I'm expecting an answer. I'm just trying to think about that as we go through what.
So the reason why.
I don't know if that matters. I mean, obviously the first floor, but maybe their basement's unfinished. That's pretty common for a lot of people that are trying to afford a house.
The reason why we did it unfinished, though, if you remember, Chris, was because of the fact you have multiple level of homes. And so if it's a third of, you know, if, if it's not really, if it's more like a split style home, we didn't want to have to worry about trying to quantify each of those total. And so we just slapped a number of twenty-four hundred square feet. I personally don't think it'll matter, because if I bought a house with a thousand square feet finished, but it had a total of twenty-four hundred square feet finished, that should be my prerogative, not the city's.
Well, one, one thing that I, I don't know, I've seen some new, like in the new daybreak where they have homes that look like they're three stories high and they're six hundred square feet per floor. Not appealing, in my opinion, uh, so, yeah. And so that's one concern. Uh, for me, the square footage, maybe it's, you know, twelve hundred square feet finished or something. Uh, it gives them more, more flexibility to the person building the home. And I think it makes it more affordable too, because that's an element we've been talking about. How do we make it more affordable? That, that could help out a lot.
I guess it, I don't like just ditching square footage for residential, uh, for single family residential, ditching it completely. I don't know why we really care. The rest, I think we care.
And and I, I did just look it up and, um, we have the largest, uh, square footage per house, single family house in the United States.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
No, no, just in general, our average. Yeah. And so it sho- it showed that, that, and the only thing I could pull up was, uh, one that showed back in two thousand.
I'm sorry, you just threw out a huge statement, and I just want to clarify exactly what you mean by that.
It said for the state.
For the state of Utah.
Yeah. So we have the highest square footage average. Um, but, but it said that, um, it said in the, and this is United States, but, but average, uh, is twenty-one hundred square feet is the average size. And so, um, we're obviously above average with what we, we require even, so.
I just think there's some opportunities to, to do exactly what you said, even, even on a smaller lot, be able to have a yard, because you don't have this, this big footprint of the house that's required.
Yeah.
You're seeing that in the city life, right? You've got a lot of people.
What Jared said is, is a valid concern. And I don't know if you guys heard it, but what Jared said is then we'll just have builders come in and do smaller lots.
That's the net density that we're trying to address too, I think.
And that is, that is a concern in my mind as well.
Are the other elements.
We can't hear you at all, Jared.
How's that?
Good.
Good. So the number that's widely used nationwide.
Good. So the number that's widely used nationwide for the average home price in the United States is three thousand square feet, average three thousand square foot home. That's what's quoted over and over and over again. I'm not saying that that's what ours should be, but I mean, two thousand and twenty-four hundred is, is pretty close. I mean, the, the fact that there were neighborhoods like mine and Steve's that were built in the last boom increased that average for Harriman. Everything that's been done since then decreases it. So I don't think that us necessarily designating a square footage here is going to help a ton because if I'm a builder coming in and I buy four hundred acres and you tell me what that minimum is, I'm going to squeeze in as many as I possibly can. It's not about the lot. It is about the square footage of the home.
And Jared did this earlier.
Tie a lower square footage home to a minimum lot size?
Uh, I agree. And, and Jared did.
To protect against.
Jared wasn't in here earlier when we talked about the general plan. I don't know if you've heard it, but one of the things we talked about was a potential zone. More, uh, more designed for horses. And with that being said, it was a little bit along the lines of smaller house size, larger lots. Okay, okay.
There's nothing that the city can't afford to build, right? Affordability is should decrease the construction cost. That does not mean that that home will be like, or built, right?
You also have to understand affordability is a ratio of what it costs versus how much they earn. And if we're only talking about housing costs and we're not talking about wages, we're missing an opportunity to create affordability.
So I mean, there's so many of those things that, I mean, I've had this discussion with I don't know how many different lawmakers about impact. Impact fees. Cause they see that as lost revenue. Well, what's the plan to replace impact fees? Make the city's bond for the infrastructure. So the person buying the house is going to pay the same price as if they had paid the impact fees. The developer gets to pocket that money. And then they, the homeowner pays higher taxes, informed property taxes to pay for those bonds to build the infrastructure. So it does, it doesn't matter what we do to try to lower construction cost, if the price of the home is going to be driven by the overall market. So it's a market driven by supply and demand, right? Increase the number of single-family homes, which is, you talk to any builder, right? That's what people come in wanting. Decatched, single-family home. And what they end up settling for is much less because there simply are not enough being built, right? They aren't available. Existing homeowners are not selling them because there's nowhere for them to go. So the, the supply has been constrained. Our own numbers show it. We're two times what we should be for multifamily attached. So the, at least I'm, I'd say this because I'm the one who kind of asked that we bring this up. Because we are, we are woefully, woefully out of balance with multifamily versus single-family. I mean, we're forty percent plus, it's way too high. Twenty, twenty-five to thirty tops is, is what a community should be to be quote balanced for so many reasons. So the affordability thing to me just is, is crazy. You need to increase the supply. And I can draw you some pictures and show you studies. Everything points to the fact that the answer of community is the higher the housing prices and vice versa. As far as the standards for single-family homes, my intention was not to necessarily go through the standard. To, to encourage more single-family. It's more to change the, the standards of the multifamily, right? Increase those standards so that builders look at building single. Because then they can, it's a higher profit margin. That's how we can help them build more single-family. And then encourage the, the pictures you see on all these presentations, the general plan just made me laugh as I watched those slides come up. They're taking pictures of the empty wheat field behind my house that will be Olympia Hills one day and High Country and showing that as Harriman in our general plan update. That's insane. That's not, that's not our community, but every, every picture you see shows more of the country feel, right? Right? Our mission statement, everything. And then what we're, what has been done over the last ten years is completely the opposite. So the idea isn't necessarily to change the single-family home standards and make them more lax. It's to increase the standards on them both. Um, this, this last one, the building elevations, the three lot thing is always. If we want, we want greater diversity in architectural standards, increase that number. Right? Make them be more creative. It can't be higher than the five. It has, it's got to be five or six or seven. So you're not ending up with the same house like every other house as they go across the street down there. That's all for now.
Did you get that, Michael?
I did. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
One more thing. I'm going through my notes here. Um, why don't we look at removing density bonuses? Some of them don't.
Agreed.
As far as this, as far as the stone and whatnot. I think it's, I think it's what we have for single-family is fine and helps architecture, but I think that number, right, that they can't, they have to differ every three. Increase that number is going to get you more diversity there. Um, other things that have been mentioned, the other communities have done, multifamily has increased that number for multifamily. It's not thirty, it's forty. Right? Those are big buildings, have clear pack, bigger eyesore. Um, if there's, some of them have a required number of units if they're over multifamily, if it's over a certain number of underground parking, right? Right? Things like that that make those areas actually nicer. And hopefully help us in, in some of those areas. But then as far as the actual incentive for developers, builders, the family, right? Well, if it's more costly, the profit margin isn't that high anymore. They'll be more incentivized.
And, and I do agree with you. Uh, I mean, a couple of years back, I talked about underground parking and, and the need for that with higher density and, and the point that we made with that was if you go down fifty-six hundred and, and you know, you go past, I think there's the orthodontist or the dentist and, and the gas station, that fifty-five plus community is a prime example. It's a parking lot and then it's a large building and that's all it is. And if they had put underground parking at a percentage of it, they would have, it'd be much more inviting.
Yeah.
So. But that is something that I agree with with townhomes, with, uh, with anything of higher density. And so I do think townhomes even is an option to, to put some sort of underground parking arrangements in some of, some of them are, are appropriate. Some of them are not. So, um, so Michael, any other comments on this slide? From anyone?
Thank you. And I think there's just one more slide. So next slide. So this is just again, the planning commission's ability to review, um, a deviation or exception to these standards. Um, it, it seems like it's been working. Um, we, we haven't entertained a lot of requests since I've been here.
I only, I only remember two, Michael. I remember two last maybe year, year and a half. That's it.
Yeah. And, and the planning commission, I think, has been pretty equitable and reasonable in, in reviewing and, and making their decision. So it seems like it's been a good tool, but, um, maybe when, when we bring back a revision to this group. Uh, I think ideally I would like to see this on our next group meeting, having a draft that's trying to respond to the comments that you provided tonight. And anything else that you may wish to email me after this conversation? And let's see if we can have a, a draft, uh, for us to look at. I think and it's in our December. That we're going to have another joint meeting. So.
There's no way we're having a meeting in Dec- a joint meeting in December. Not, not, not this Eve, our New Year's Eve.
But I, I think we had talked about moving it not from the thirtieth, but maybe to the twenty-ninth. But okay, whatever the next joint meeting is.
All right.
Um, thank you.
Then if there's no other comments on that, we'll move on to item one point six, which is a discussion pertaining to water efficiency standards. And that's Jonathan.
Uh, Chris, this is, uh, Justin. Uh, so I'll, I'll kind of lead off here.
And, and/or Justin.
And actually we're going to, to have Heidi, uh, jump in and speak to this as well. So, um, commissioners, council and mayor. Uh, so this is a topic that I think has been, you know, discussed multiple times. If I remember correctly, Jordan Valley came to a joint meeting, you know, probably a year ago and discussed some of their concerns with meeting water demands, um, for future development here, particularly in the southwest corner of the valley. Um, and then this has been a, a discussion point, uh, in council meetings a number of times over the last year as well. So what the, what the water efficiency standards are is Jordan Valley Conservancy District who provides, you know, a little over fifty percent of our annual water throughout the entire city. Um, they're a large water purveyor throughout Salt Lake County, as many of you know. And they're looking at long-term planning and trying to understand how they can meet the future demands with the, uh, with their planned sources of water. Um, and one of those methods is conservation. And, uh, so these water efficiency standards were adopted by their board, uh, I believe in June of this year. And what, what's required, and we'll get into this a little bit, is that, is the member agencies that they're looking to increase their contract or any future annexed lands um, from, from a certain date, need to follow these efficiency standards. Um, so I'll see, uh, Jonathan, next slide please. Um, so what we'll do is we'll have Heidi, uh, kind of go in to some detail on what these efficiency standards are. And then I'll have a little more discussion on kind of the what, why and the how we're doing this. And then, uh, kind of talk about, uh, where, where we're going to from here. So Heidi, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes. Hello, everyone. Um, so these efficiency standards in my mind are awesome. Like they're, they're like a template for what you should do and they've solved all your problems for you. And so it's great. I think this is a great direction that Jordan Valley is sort of requiring us to move and I'm really glad they're doing it. Um, so let's see. Uh, can I control the slides or do you want to go to the next one? Either way.
And Heidi, your, your energy, I think you should be in charge of these meetings.
Well. Okay.
You should have control.
Okay, thank you, John. Let's see. Um. Okay, so this, oh, we went too fast, Heidi. Calm down. So this is a typical landscape that you see in Utah. Um, we just want our grass and we all know how to maintain our grass and we want to keep it green and we think it's easy. And in a sense it is, but it's all, it's like the only thing we've learned how to do. But I think that this, um, local scape program gives us so many options to have something better. Um, so what, something better is, is what the next slide is. And that's the same house, but using the, um, design guidelines provided by local scape. And so it, it's catered specifically to single-family homes, but it also applies um, not only in residential areas, but to the commercial areas. So in the residential area, they talk about having um, a designing your lawn to be a central location so that you, you use lawn as a design element instead of your default ground cover, which is just fantastic. And then what you use is you only water that area with spray heads and you water that area efficiently with those spray heads. And then the other areas where you can add color and texture and all the fun things in your planting beds, those are watered with drip irrigation. And that way you're only watering plants that need water and you're not watering everything. So you hopefully decrease the amount of weeds, which hopefully, you know, then you don't have to be out there weeding all the time. Um, so I think we have a whole bunch of examples here of, um, how the local scape program was implemented in different areas already. Um, and I think these are just beautiful ideas. This is a backyard. And so in the backyard, they talk about having a central um, meeting area. And then you have a lawn area that has a specific use and that lawn area can be, you know, your recreational use. Um, the landscape requirements specifically have percentages attached to it. And so um, their design guidelines require us to have lawn areas that do not exceed two hundred and fifty square feet or thirty-five percent of the total landscape area. Then in commercial, it has different, um, percentages. But I just think these landscapes look so inviting. Like I, I wish my yard looked like this, but don't ever come to my house because it doesn't look like this. But these places just look so great. So, um, this is a, this is a slide from Jordan Valley and they're saying that if we can convert our yards to the local scape program, we'll save a hundred and thirty thousand gallons of water per year, which is tremendous. And I think this is really important and something, you know, they, they, obviously they, their whole main goal is water efficiency. So let's see. Is this, is this where you want to take over, Justin?
You're doing such a great job. Why don't you take, take the next few slides to them? I'm obviously.
Okay, so, um, we talked a little bit about indoor water efficiency standards. They have a whole bunch of lists of things that they recommend. Um, and I think they're great things for new houses and, um, so that list is pretty sufficient and easy to follow. And then um, we mentioned briefly about the, the residential landscapes, but it applies to the front and the side yards. Um, and they have a strong suggestion to the backyard. I believe they also, I thought they applied this to backyard, but it's designed so that your open space, which is your lawn area, does not exceed thirty-five percent of the total landscape area. And the other key point that we need to make here is it does prohibit lawn in areas more narrow than eight feet. So that means no more lawn in the park strip. Um, lawn in the park strip just cannot be watered efficiency, efficiently. We, I, I mean, the irrigation community has tried for years to invent all these different kinds of methods of irrigating in the park strip. Bottom line is they're mostly just inefficient. Um, and so if you take the, the lawn out of the, the park strip, it solves a lot of problems with water efficiency, but I think it gives you a lot of opportunity to add variation of color and texture to the park strips that can really define a streetscape. And I think it gives you a lot of opportunities. Um, let's see, I think the next one's going to talk about the commercial landscape. So the commercial landscape standards, um, in fact, we have implemented this here already in Harriman, uh, out at the, um, Bullfrog uh, um, building. They are work, they worked with Jordan Valley and I think their landscape, um, it's kind of falling out of season right now, but I anticipate next year it'll look pretty good. And I'm kind of excited to go out there and check it out in the spring. Um, but they recommend, um, you know, their recreation area is smaller because it's a, it's a commercial. And so they like to keep the lawn less than twenty percent of the total landscaped area. And then, um, they're suggesting that we could go down to a fifty, fifty percent live plant material coverage. Um, our current ordinance states seventy-five percent plant coverage. That's something that could be changed or withheld, upheld. Either way, I think um, is achievable. Is, is this where you want to talk, jump in, Justin?
Yeah, so I'll jump in here. So thanks, Heidi. Um, so about these water efficiency standards, so these are going to be implemented throughout the entire city. And we have been, uh, working with, um, should I go back here? I wanted to talk about, okay, so this is good. Um, so, so they'll be implemented through the entire city, like I said. And once, so once the once the contract with Jordan Valley is updated, which we're in need to do, um, these efficiency standards will be required throughout all of Harriman. And so we'll be, we're putting together a package to send out to the builders to inform them of the, the upcoming change. And so that they can be notified and understand. Jordan Valley has met with multiple builders, many of them who are currently building in the city, um, and discuss these efficiency standards. And, and several of them are on board, like Ivory Homes. Uh, they're doing this in a lot of their communities, not just in Harriman, but all of their communities. And several others are looking into doing the same thing. Uh, one thing that Jordan Valley has done in the past is they have, and are currently doing, uh, they, they are giving grants and funding opportunities for builders and, and homeowners who are making uh, changes to their landscapes to follow the, the local scapes. And then, uh, builders have also received grant funding, um, to be able to landscape their homes if they follow these, these standards. One thing that's important to know is once we, once we've adopted these efficiency standards, some of the ability for, you know, builders and, and homeowners to receive funding from Jordan Valley will kind of go away. So that's an important message to, to give. But, um, we're in need of updating our contract, like I said. And the reason to do that is um, it, our, if we go over our allotted, uh, contract amount, as you see here, there's block one and block two rates. Um, the, the cost for the block two, and that's essentially any water that's taken, it's a. The, the cost for the block two, and that's essentially any water that's taken, it's over a hundred and twenty percent of your current contract, is almost double, as you can see there. And so that, it's important to, to update our contract and meet these water efficiency standards so that our residents aren't having to pay that higher block two water. Jonathan is not letting me go to the next slide. So here's kind of a, a background of, of what the water use we've used over the last several years. Our current contract is two thousand six hundred and sixty-seven total acre feet. We're allowed to take twenty percent more than that annually. And so our total allotted amount would be just over three thousand acre feet. Now you can see since two thousand sixteen, we've been over that. And we've been working with Jordan Valley to try and come up with a good, a good acre foot amount annually so that we're staying within our allotted contract because we have a take-or-pay contract, which means if we set our contract at four thousand acre feet and we use thirty-five hundred acre feet, we're still paying for four thousand acre feet. So we have to play a balance here to make sure that we're not paying for water we're not using. And there's been a lot of adjustments in our water system over the last several years. We expanded our secondary irrigation system. We've added other sources, which has made it difficult to try and put a finger on, on exactly what our acre foot allotment should be. We're narrowing that down and we'll have that answer as we come forward with Jordan Valley and adopt these standards. So next slide, please.
Hey, Justin, a question on the last slide.
Yeah.
So, so because I remember the, the they came down, the water, water guys came down a while ago and they talked about the high density and the quarter acres and they showed the usage and everything else like that. And I remember, and, and you can help correct me, but there was a really high amount of usage when there was a density just on, just sheer usage for personal needs versus lawn care and everything else. And then there was the usage for those that had, were watering their yards and things like that. What, what, I mean, is that where a lot of our usage is coming? Or is this all based on the water usage for outdoor use? I mean, you're obviously basing on everything, correct or no?
This is a total water use that we purchased from Jordan Valley. Now we have our own sources which supplement this as well. Like I said, they're supplying just over fifty percent of the total water. I think what you're implying to is, you know, you have, we're moving to a higher density development as teams. And there is a breakpoint of about that five units per acre. Where so typically on a quarter acre lot or similar, your outdoor use is much higher than says, you know, something that's much smaller than that. So, you know, if we're, if we're reaching that five units per acre, that's where your indoor and outdoor water starts to get to where they're not balanced. And so you have a lot more year-round indoor use on the higher density. And you have, you know, a, a peaking factor in the summer on, on lots that have larger, larger lots, so more irrigable area. And so that, that difference is about that five units per acre to where you have those demands that start offsetting that outdoor water and that's a year-round usage. So obviously you've seen the, the increase there year to year. And that, that is essentially due to, you know, our growth. But obviously you have, you know, some of the conditions that we're seeing this year with the hot, dry summers. And so you're starting to see an increased water demand there as well. So it's, it's a multiple factors. So did that answer your question, Chris?
Yeah, you did, you did. I mean, I was wondering where that threshold was in five units per acre. I mean, that's, it's pretty safe to say that's most townhomes, most townhome communities.
Yep. Hey, Chris, so my, my next door neighbor, he works for Jordan Valley. He said that sixty-six percent of our water is used for watering our lawns.
Right.
Yeah.
And so that, that's where these water efficiency standards are very important. You can, you'll, you know, well, I think we'll see, you know, a drastic decrease in our water use, which obviously in the end saves everybody money. So next slide, please, Jonathan. So kind of just an overview, like I said, is we're, we're looking to increase our purchase contract with Jordan Valley. And that comes with, once we, you know, we have to adopt these water efficiency standards before we can increase that contract. And once we do that, then obviously we have to fall within those standards and implement them throughout the city. And all new and rehabilitated landscapes must follow this efficiency standard requirement. Now we had a discussion earlier, just earlier today. We're working very closely with Jordan Valley because we're the, you know, the first city to do this or member agency that Jordan Valley has. And so we're kind of working through this together to make sure that what we adopt is meeting the expectations that Jordan Valley has. And Jordan Valley has great interest in understanding what we're doing so that they can, you know, understand if they need to modify or change some of their, their guidelines or requirements to make sure that it, it's usable. And we've worked very closely with them and they have modified their efficiency standards based on some of the meetings we've had. But it's going to be important moving forward that, that we, that we understand these efficiency standards. They're going to have obviously a drastic change in what we're currently seeing installed throughout the city. And so we wanted to bring this before the joint, if you're at the joint meeting before City Council and Planning Commission, because Planning Commission will be receiving, you know, they'll be seeing these water efficiency standards again in the ordinance and they'll be making a recommendation to the City Council for their final approval of the ordinance. So we wanted to bring this before you so that you can see it. This is something that, you know, we're trying to move forward. I don't want to say fairly quickly, but on a, on a fairly tight timeline. The, our new contract renews in January. And we need to have that in place, you know, you know, at least before probably May or June of next year. But I think we're very close. Chase is working very, you know, Chase is working closely with Jordan Valley. We're very close on ordinance. And I think probably within the next couple of months, we'll, we'll be bringing things back. Jordan, like I said, Jordan Valley wants to review our language. So we'll have, we'll have that before you hear it in the next few meetings to Planning Commission and then City Council. Some of the things that, that I wanted to point out a little bit here are we don't have, we don't really understand what the impacts of this will be. And because we have, we're going to need to, through the planning review process and building permit process, review to make sure that each one of these building lots are meeting these efficiency standards. And then put an inspection process together that we can go back out after the, you know, after the landscapes are installed to make sure they've actually installed and met the requirements. We're talking to Planning Commission and Building Department and Water Department and Heidi and others is, you know, we'd like to work through this process and maybe put a little more demand on our current staff before we start deciding whether we need to increase staff members or, you know, hire consultants to help us with that. We just want to have a good understanding. So this may have an impact to, you know, our staffing levels as well. Obviously the local scape, the upfront costs, like Jonathan mentioned in, you know, his previous slide, talking about stormwater detention ponds and park strips. There is an increased cost to capital cost in, install these landscapes. But in speaking with Jordan Valley and their experiences that they have is you, you start to see that upfront capital cost being negated throughout the life of the landscape because you're going to be paying for less water, typically less fertilizer. And so you're going to see some, some benefits there. Some downfalls are, you know, there can be some increased sprinkler maintenance. Our residents are typically used to maintaining grass and very little plant life. And so there's going to be a, a shift there to where, you know, we may have to help them. And Jordan Valley is, you know, very on board to help them do that. So those are just a few of the, you know, positives and potential negatives or downsides to this. But I think it'll be a, a, a good, a good path forward to allow us to work with, with everybody. So.
Did they talk anything about code enforcement and increase? Because what I have seen, I've actually seen local scape go through my community a little bit that I live in. And what I've seen is they get their grant money and they get all that, they get their reimbursement. But then after about six months of, of it, you know, it's done, the maintenance that goes on with that is.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I heard you, Adam. And I heard your question, comment.
We, we missed half of it.
So I'll restate. So what I've seen is this local scape idea goes through. And the old word was your escape, and I know that's been the new taboo word and I'm not trying to say that it's different. But the local scapes went through where I've lived. And what you can see is they actually, I've seen where people have, have likely gotten money and it totally fits with the sampled landscape plan that in all of these packages that they've seen. But what happens is after about six months, the maintenance goes down because they don't realize that plants die, they're not like grass. It's, it's not as easy to just mow and be done. You have to actually spend time in your yard. And if you like that kind of thing, that's awesome. But if you don't, what happens is the yard over time starts to deteriorate. And then in about a year, it deteriorates more. And because of our lack of code enforcement, I was curious if they have talked about code enforcement related to that topic.
So that, that was a concern that was brought up by multiple people. Michael voiced his opinion on that and Heidi also as far as, you know, people aren't used to maintaining those types of landscapes. And so I think it's going to, there, there is going to need to be a shift in how people look at landscaping. Jordan Valley has been, you know, very open to say, yes, we, you know, we have conservation gardens. We put on instruction, instructional classes on how to maintain these. And they're, they're willing to increase that and provide information to residents to hopefully educate them on how to better, you know, maintain these types of landscapes, irrigation systems and those types of things. So we think we will see exactly what you described, but hopefully in time, you know, people will start understanding how to better, you know, better maintain these landscapes. And, and obviously you're seeing in another, you know, even just portions of the state, Southern Utah, Nevada, California, a lot of those areas have similar landscapes to what local scapes looks like. And so obviously it's just a shift.
Hey, Justin, I, I do probably have a little comment about that. It is a shift and I understand that the drawbacks of it, even Jared's comment even about, you know, in a few months or a few years, you just see half the bark is gone. The weeds are all grown back and things like that. But the problem is the other alternative is to make people pay for the water they use and quit subsidizing it. So, so we, we have to come up with some way to conserve water or we just simply won't have enough.
So I actually agree we need to go this route. What I more was trying to hint at is, and I know Clint and I know Jared are aware of my concern. And most of every planning commissioner in any planning department group has heard me voice this concern is code enforcement concerns. And the lack of that, which is changing our community, that's more what I am concerned with than necessarily heading this direction.
No, I agree with you a hundred percent. And I think that that's definitely an agenda item for us. We've got to, I, I get more complaints about code enforcement than I do anything. So we need to get on that.
Yeah, secondly, said Adam too, I, I took a picture of this home, just a couple of houses up from mine where the family moved out. There's several feet of weeds and it's dead grass. It's just, it was, it was grass at one time, but now it's just weeds. So code enforcement, another plug there.
So I would recommend we add that as a future agenda item for the council to discuss.
I agree. And I'd happy to come to whatever meeting is to discuss about that.
So I have some comments on this. So I actually just, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry. So I just recently local scape my backyard. And the way that they have, I was first introduced at our joint meeting and I took the classes, learned about it. And I think a lot of the things that they really emphasize is making it low maintenance. So when you're putting in drip lines specific to your plants and you're doing fifty percent coverage at maturity with your perennials, you're making it so you're not feeding your weed. You're not giving it water. So you're discouraging that. So you are going to have people that aren't maintaining them properly, but you're also going to have people that are going to have really beautiful landscapes. I'd be happy to share mine with you. I'm really excited about it, about it. It turned out so nice. But it's so easy and it really, it makes a difference in the overall look rather than just having grass. It, it changes everything. I, I'm excited about doing the local scape. I think that we, we really need to be conserving water all around. So.
Thank you, Heather. Heather, thank you.
Justin, this is Jared. I just have one question. Actual resident is going to pay. So we have two, one. Block two, we're amending our contract. Does that mean everyone's on block two?
No.
And everyone's rates go up or those in the older sections still stay there? On those in the newer sections will be block two?
So they, so I, I think there's two parts to the, the, and the two-part answers to your question there. So the, so our, our contract, our general contract is for all water use within our current boundaries. And so the only way that residents would pay block two or the city would pay block two rates is if we go over that hundred and twenty percent of our contract. And then the, the amount of water that we use over the hundred and twenty percent would be that block two. So if we used a hundred and fifty percent of our contract, we, thirty percent of that would be under block two rates. Now the, where as far as new residents coming in, that only applies to property or lands that are annexed into our city boundary. And then that would apply to that new area and would not be citywide. So we'll need to, if we have future annexations happen, we'll need to implement metering or set in service areas for those areas to make sure that the people that, the, the people who build in that newly annexed area are paying those block two rates and it's not being implemented into the rest of the existing city.
I want to make sure every time this comes up that that understanding is not changing. And then the only other question I have for you is, I've seen a lot of people complaining lately in various forms that their water bills are much higher and Harriman must have increased their bills. That, so the sequence in the background, most of them don't realize how much more water they use during this period. It's long and hot, but was that affected somehow by us going over that twenty percent?
No. So right now, the, right now, the block two was not in effect. And so we're just paying, anything over that hundred and twenty percent is at what our current acre foot price is. And so there wasn't an increase to water rates based on an increase in Jordan Valley. We did implement July one, as you know, a two percent water rate increase. And we foresee that happening for the next several years as the water rate study that we did in two thousand nineteen and implemented then suggested that we should do a two percent increase for the next several years to make sure we're keeping up with, with our expenses and operating costs. So they did see a slight increase of two percent, but it had nothing to do with our contract with Jordan Valley.
All right. Any other discussion on this item? All right. Then that's the last item on the work meeting. Future meetings are Planning Commission meeting Thursday, October first, which is tomorrow. City Council meeting Wednesday, October fourteenth. And then future joint meeting agenda topics are Harriman Town Center Commercial Property, the Code Enforcement Approach and Processes and elevation changes in developments. Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you, guys.